City of Clarence, it is my pleasure to be able to welcome you to this formal council meeting of Clarence City Council. Could you please stand and join me with the council prayer? For Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to thou save thy blessing on this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen. I'd like to also acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight, and pay our respects to elders past and present. Thank you. Electronic meeting arrangements tonight, we are again unable to include members of the public physically in our meeting space because of Covid restrictions. Accordingly, we are live streaming and the meeting will be broadcast by YouTube and is being broadcast by YouTube. Questions and deputations from members of public will be read by our general manager. A full copy of the agenda is available on council's website and a copy of the recommendations for decision will be available via a link on the YouTube stream. I declare the meeting formally open and notice that we have a full house, no apologies. I'd now like to deal with the start items and with an omnibus vote at the conclusion. First of those is a confirmation of minutes for the 10th of August as circulated, taken as read and confirmed. The second is that council notes the workshops conducted on the 17th and 24th of August and the agenda briefing on the 28th of August. The third is tabling of petitions. General Manager, I understand we have one from Alderman James. A petition favor?
Yes, I do. It's mayor, thank you. The following petition complies with the act requirements. It's a petition from 173 signatories objecting to a bottle shop in the Edgeworth Street Lorraine Shopping Centre for the following reasons. One will detract from the character amenity of the neighbourhood in an area already experiencing social economic issues. Secondly, will raise security concerns for management and staff at the pharmacy located next to the proposed bottle shop. Thirdly, will strain and cause further congestion as the shopping centre is already experiencing lack of car parking spaces. And fourthly, will cause unnecessary disturbance and unreasonable impact for a small community mainly comprising of small families and senior citizens living so close to the proposed development. 173 signatories, as mentioned, 12 signatories only contain a Christian name and partial address which does not meet council's adopted guidelines for submission of petitions which require that a paper petition must contain details of each of the signatories. The details need to be sufficient to identify each signatory. This will usually be a signatory's name and address as a minimum. I formally table the petition, Mr Mayor, in accordance with council procedure.
Thank you, Alderman James. No other petitions? No case, moving on to item 10 reports from outside bodies. Firstly, the copying refused disposal site joint authority. I noticed there's a confidential quarterly report, but Alderman Longley?
Nothing more word than what's in the general section. I guess if there's any other matters, they can be resolved later.
Thank you. Moving on, Tasmanian Water Corporation. There was a briefing to owners' representatives on the 19th of August, so I'll table the notes from that. And under the Greater Hobart Committee, there was a meeting of the mayors, metro mayors on the 18th of August. I'd like to tab the action sheet from that. There was also a launch of the Hobart City Deal Annual Report for 2020, which I will And now, moving on to reports from council and special committees. I'd like to table the minutes from the Hobart Airport Community Aviation Consultant Group meeting. And I note that they are three on the agenda. Firstly, the NRM Committee. Do you wish to say anything about that report?
Taken as is. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bicycle Advisory Committee, Alderman Newington?
No, no, thanks. We're just done.
And the Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee?
Just some great work being done by our staff and looking forward to seeing some of these projects completed in the short term.
Thank you. And finally, that the information contained in the weekly briefing reports for the 10th, 17th and 24th of August be noted. Are there any questions from the weekly briefing reports? Alderman James?
Avoid her, Mr Mayor. Put an order on, write another report to the minutes.
My apologies. Thank you.
The minutes for the meeting on the 20th of August, the minutes I'd like to give the committee, I'd like to table those, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. And Alderman Chomp?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I have the minutes of the Richmond Advisory Committee for July and the Community Health Wellbeing Committee for May.
Were there any other reports? Alderman James considering the weekly briefing report?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I would like to draw council's attention to the 24th of August 2020 and in particular to page 49, the last page. And my question is directed to Mr Lovell in his capacity as manager of city planning. Mr Lovell, there is reference here to Southern Bay Investments and also with regard to unapproved dumping of fill and earth works, excuse me, and also the second item listed there at 240 Gilston Bay Road, Gilston Bay, unapproved dumping of fill and earth. Through you, Mr Mayor, too, Mr Lovell. I thought, Mr Lovell, this matter had been resolved and that there had been steps taken by the company concerned to basically undertake works that council did request, but it now seems that the matter's going to the magistrate's court. Could you just elaborate on, perhaps just advise in relation to that matter, please? For those two matters?
That matter was unresolved. There was no undertaking to deal with the matter and as a result, the appropriate notice was issued, an opportunity was given to contest that. However, the applicant, the developer has chosen to refer the matter to the court.
Thank you. Any other matters on the weekly briefing reports? In that case, for all the start items, I invite a motion that the officers' recommendations be agreed. Thank you, Alderman Peers, thank you, Alderman Kendy. No further discussion, all those in favor. That is carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving back to the unstarted items, firstly, the mayor's communication. I'd like to table a list of my appointments and the deputy mayor's appointments over the last three weeks. And move on to item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or closest associate. Are there any conflicts of interest? Alderman Longley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I have a, I'd be very interested in item 11.3.1?
Thank you. Alderman Longley?
I have a certain interest in a man in flight on there.
Sorry, I missed the last bit?
The man in flight.
Thank you. There being no other declarations, moving on to public question time. There are two public questions on notice and I'll ask the general manager to address those, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two questions from Ms Kimbra Fitzmaurice in relation to the Kangaroo Bay Pier. The first question is how much is this project now anticipated to cost? The answer to the question is council has allocated funds of 1.59 million to the project and received a state government grant of $350,000. It is estimated the final project cost could be near 2.78 million, which includes a contingency amount. This amount, this is the amount that council currently anticipates the project to cost, noting that unforeseen contingencies may still arise. The second question is as follows. Assuming the figures accessed 3 August 2020 primarily on council's website are close to accurate, who is paying for the apparent shortfall in the budget of approximately $860,000? The answer to the question is the additional funding is currently funded via approved loan funding associated with the Covid-19 stimulus support package offered by the Tasmanian Government. If grant funding becomes available, council will apply for that funding. Council also currently has strong financial capacity and sufficient cash holdings to consider borrowing funds or accessing cash holdings via an internal loan with no material effect on its ongoing operations.
Thank you. And item 7.3 answers to questions previously taken on notice. Are there any more of those? I think we've got two of those.
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of answers to questions previously taken on notice, there are two questions from Mrs Joanne Marsh and the answers are contained in the agenda and I propose to take that as read if that's acceptable.
Thank you. And item 7.4, questions without notice. I understand you have five of those, General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first two questions come from Mrs Joanne Marsh of Bell Reef and I'd like to propose that Mr Graham provides a response to those. I'll just read out the first question. I'd like to thank the hardworking council crew who have begun remediation work at the eastern end of Bell Reef Beach Regional Park by rejuvenating the garden area. After periods of steady rain, the grass kickabout area of the park becomes sodden and extensive pooling of water occurs over pathways and park surfaces along the length of the park. This problem can remain for days after the rain has eased. My question is, how and when will this serious drainage problem be rectified considering footpath and landscaping works have been recently approved for the affected area? Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor. The proposed levels of the new pathway and adjacent transitions to the existing parkland include contouring surface runoff towards new stormwater pits to help manage the issues of pooling water. In terms of when will the works occur, the work is intended to be intended in September, October this year and actual timing of the works is dependent upon receiving suitable tenders and contractor availability and this, of course, will come to a future council meeting.
Thank you.
Mrs Marsh's second question is as follows. Did the consultant engineers identify the location of the three metre wide footpaths along adjacent properties recently consulted by council or was this information provided by council officers? Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Council officers identified the length of the three metre wide footpath.
Thank you.
The third question tonight comes from Mr Victor Marsh of Bell Reef. I've noted that in this financial year, the council have budgeted $200,000 for the replacement of the irrigation system at Kangaroo Bay Oval. My question is, when was the current irrigation system installed and what was the cost? Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor. The current irrigation system is greater than 12 years old and further investigation is required to actually obtain the cost of that installation. When the Kangaroo Bay Oval was moved to the west and the Kangaroo Bay parkland created, the original irrigation system was modified and extended upon. This has generated difficulty in managing the sprinkling of the Kangaroo Bay Oval, which needs its own dedicated ring main and sprinkler feeder system.
Thank you.
The next two questions come from Ms Anne Boxall of Seven Mile Beach and I propose to take these two questions on notice. The responses will be provided in the agenda for the 21st to September meeting. Will council be commissioning a study into the effects of building developments on existing properties in areas zoned at high risk of inundation in Seven Mile Beach? The second question is, when flooding occurs in an area zoned at high risk of inundation, where should the responsibility lie? We'll take that as a notice.
Thank you. Moving to item eight, deputations by members of the public and I understand we have five of those, General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have five. I will read them in the order that they were received today. The first submission is from Mrs Nader, who is the property owner at 13, oh, sorry, at 30 Roaring Beach Road, South Arm, and her deputation is in relation to item 11.3.4, the development application for 65 Roaring Beach Road. Miss Nader states as follows. Risk contracting Corona by ignoring state and federal health warnings and journey to buy daily papers. Why? Clarence City Council during Covid decides to accept and advertise property development applications. On the 3rd of August 2020, appeals open regarding proposed development of 65 Roaring Beach Road. On afternoon of 3rd August, Clarence City Council sent MS Nader her first notice regarding proposed development of property opposite hers. Miss Nader's postbox still hasn't received postal notice sent by CCC regarding proposed development of 65 Roaring Beach Road, South Arm, that details repellent rights. Heating health warnings, failing to draw property boundaries and gates of surrounding properties during Corona, no council notices were cited by Miss Nader, CCC rates payer. The roadway in between driveway at 65 Roaring Beach Road, South Arm and Miss Nader's driveway opposite at 30 Roaring Beach Road, South Arm, does not allow two cars to travel in opposite directions at the same time, maintaining the same speed. Miss Nader, property owner and rate payer, strongly opposes any property development of 65 Roaring Beach Road, South Arm, that increases commercial traffic, trucks, tractors, planes and use, cars and bike use into and out of their driveway opposite hers. Increased traffic in and out of the driveway at 65 Roaring Beach Road will impede and delay Miss Nader's entry into Roaring Beach Roads. Increased traffic will also increase noise and cause dust to invade Miss Nader's premises. Miss Nader, property owner at 30 Roaring Beach Road, South Arm, appeals any property development proposal increasing commercial and private traffic entering and departing 65 Roaring Beach Road, South Arm, 7022, at any current or proposed access point. The second deputation is from Richard and Pamela Field of Bell Reef in respect to the development application for three multiple dwellings at 17 Alexandra Esplanade. The deputation is as follows. The development was proposed, as proposed, will significantly impact on the enjoyment and amenity of our home as a result of both its proximity, height, visual amenity and detriment to the general ambience in our outdoor areas. The development significantly inhibits the ability to enjoy our backyard, which will become cold and damp in winter months due to the extensive shade cover as seen in the DA. The proximity of the deck on the most southern unit will substantially destroy the ambience and privacy and our option for solar generation. The developer has not approached us to discuss the development prior to submission of the DA. A development of this size and proximity is likely to devalue our home, which will make moving home an unattractive option for us. Planning approvals process provides community rate pass with little protection if decisions are made solely on the basis of compliance with the planning scheme. We request that the council delay approval of this application to enable a negotiation or mediation to take place with the developer to enable reasonable effort to mitigate impacts arising from the design. The third deputation is from Bev Shuka of Gilston Bay in relation to item 11.3.6, the Clarence Lifestyle Village at Riston. I'm writing to say I hope the council do not approve more houses for that area. The present houses are an eyesore with no trees. We want Clarence to stay like it is with parks and areas for people to enjoy. If it wasn't on a main highway, it would be okay, but it is not. If there was trees and shrubbery there, it might not be so bad. Please don't spoil the area any more than it is now. The fourth deputation is from Corinne Butters in relation to item 11.3.6, Clarence Lifestyle Village at Riston. At the council meeting tonight, could you please pass the planning amendment and permit for the Clarence Lifestyle Village? My auntie has paid her refundable deposit for the new stage and is desperate to move there. What point is there to have that unused land between the village and the caravan park? The state government is asking that all construction be accelerated to help the economy, so what better way than to approve a village addition that benefits the economy and supplies all the needed accommodation for older residents? The final deputation is from Louise Gaborit and she is a current resident of the Clarence Lifestyle Village and makes her deputation in respect to item 11.3.6 as well. We, the undersigned, would like to urge the Clarence City Council to look favourably upon this development application. We would like to notify Clarence City Council that we are hoping to become residents of the Clarence Lifestyle Village. We have chosen the Clarence Lifestyle Village as our preferred place to reside for many reasons, the main ones being the low cost of entry and no deferred management fees upon exit compared with other local retirement villages. Other benefits are the ease of management of the smaller houses and smaller gardens. We are looking forward to becoming part of the close-knit village community with its many activities which will enable us to have an enjoyable lifestyle in retirement. And there are 25 signatories to that deputation. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes the deputations.
Moving on to item 9, 9.1, notes, motion, Alderman Longley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I move the motion through my name.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman Newington, thank you. Alderman Longley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, outlining the, as outlined in explanatory notes, in recent years, south-eastern Tasmania has experienced significant population growth, as we all know. This growth has increased the number of voters on our roads, which has led to a corresponding increase in traffic congestion and community frustration. Colleagues have often heard being sole vultures of a river doing peak hour passenger ferry service and the state government's recent announcement is most welcome. However, this is but one piece of the transport solution puzzle. The simplest, most cost-effective and immediate solution is improved bus transport. To this end, Mr Mayor, on the 5th of August, you, along with the Sorrel Mayor, Council Kerry Vincent, the managing director of Redline, Mr Michael Larasie, accept my invitation to meet and discuss potential solutions to the current and growing traffic demands. Following that meeting, Mr Mayor, I understand that you and Mayor Vincent met with the Minister of Transport, Governor Michael Ferguson MP, to further explore potential options including a peak hour passenger bus service for Dodger's Ferry via Sorrel to the city and further subsidise fares on this service. Whilst my motion was drafted before your meeting with the minister, in light of that meeting, it is now more appropriate than before for council to add in support to your indecision. Mr Mayor, in recent days, colleagues have raised legitimate questions concerning the specifics of this motion. In brief, I provide the following in response. Subsidised express bus services for Dodger's Ferry in the city will remove cars up to 200 from the road each and every day at peak hour at both ends of the day. It will drive, excuse the pun, customer demand. A reduced ticket price will increase usage. At present, the $68 a week cost is too high. It will directly impact Clarence landmarks and in that I mean the historically significant built heritage such as the Richmond Bridge. And it will directly impact Clarence commuters. Removing several hundred cars from the Tasman Highway at both ends of the day is, I'm sure we would all agree, a good outcome. Mr Mayor, it is time to get real that traffic congestion and rethink the role buses can and must play in achieving a positive solution for this transit corridor. I commend the motion and seek the support of colleagues.
Thank you, Alderman Newington.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'll be honest, when I first saw this motion up, my initial reaction was, well, it's really a Clarence issue and, you know, you could say that, you know, having a bus service from Sorrel through to Hobart while we don't want to get into the habit of only dealing with things to just affect us, I thought, you know, after thinking about it a bit more, I mean, there's a lot of people that live in Sorrel that work in Clarence and go to school in Clarence as well. So we also have an obligation to help those people who need to move around our city, you know, to find ways to make that easier for them. And the point that Alderman Longley just made then about the reducing traffic congestion for people that live in Clarence and need to get across the beach or to the city or back from the city or even out towards Sorrel, we all know sometimes travelling out there can be quite, can be quite busy. So, look, anything that helps us to, you know, progress this objective and it's good to see that the mayor and Kerry Vincent, the mayor of Sorrel, have communicated and agreed that this is something that will help people in both Sorrel and Clarence. So I think, you know, sometimes it might be considered that these calls to the state government to act, sometimes don't always get the outcome that we'd like in a lot of situations, but at least I think it's a move in the right direction. And if we don't at least stand up and say, you know, can it be looked at? Well, I mean, there's no, you know, we're the best people in the, in the community to take that role and I encourage our fellow Alderman, you know, we've got nothing to lose by supporting this and hopefully that can be just one little extra addition to the whole puzzle in terms of, you know, reducing traffic congestion and making these people use public transport and make it more viable, which I think is important as well. So I encourage my fellow Alderman to support this one as well.
Thank you. Alison Birkis, Alderman Longley and then Alderman Longley.
Mr Mayor, with acceptance of the mover and seconder, I seek to move an amendment to the motion. I've been in contact with Alderman Longley during the day as to the suggested changes to the motion.
Could you reveal what it is, please, Alderman Longley?
Right. I'd like to do that now.
Yes, please, yeah.
Later. Okay. I am suggesting that we actually add two points and that we create a new point three, which says calls on the state government to investigate dedicated bus lanes for the Hobart service from and to Mornington, including the Tasman Bridge, with a view to funding and building the lanes by 2022, 23. And a new point four, calls on the state government to fund in its 21, 22 budget the installation of a cycling corridor on the Tasman Highway between Sorrel and Hobart.
Does the mover accept those amendments?
Mr Mayor, I think I'll refer to Alderman Longley's experience and expertise that really strengthens the motion. Very happy with it.
Thank you, Alderman Newington. Thank you. So the new motion is, includes those two extra points. I wonder if it's possible to get those up or not?
No, it's not.
Okay. In that case, all right.
Would you?
I'm sorry. I'm not sure you'd like the high edges of a few minutes.
No, no, but we will proceed. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, my reasoning is pretty short, sharp and sweet and I think reasonably simple. It's that the Tasman Highway between Sorrel and Hobart should be an active transport corridor. I'm of the understanding that Cycling South has had discussions and site visits with the Department of State growth as to an on-road cycling lane and also dedicated bus lanes. Both will give car drivers further incentives apart from Alderman Longley's one of cost to not use a car. I believe that a bus speed that's faster than a car and a safe alternative form of transport by bike to the car are two very powerful incentives. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Longley?
Thank you. I'm pleased that Alderman Longley got the call before I did because her amendments actually make it meaningful to the residents of Clarence. Before that, as Mr Mayor, I just thought it was vacuous grandstanding and without the amendments, I was standing at the risk of channeling the Communist Party of China, Mr Mayor, and this being a gross interference in the internal affairs of a neighbouring council. But thanks to those amendments, we now have something that, you know, the inclusion of transit lanes, which is really relevant. It fundamentally changes the entire texture of the motion and in fact, we could almost delete the references to the Dodgers Ferry and all the other things. These are things that I know that Mayor Vincent has been working on for many, many years. We should not really be, you know, wasting too much time on the matter of whether Dodgers' Ferry, extended to Dodgers Ferry or to Sorrel or things like that, but I will say that the idea of bus lanes and improving those sorts of issues are there. Now, there is a question of time and the congestion at the eastern end of the Tasman Bridge, at the at the eastern end of the Tasman, at the eastern end of Tasman Bridge. Mr. Mayor, buses are not necessarily a faster way of getting there because, you know, usually towards that, often in the morning, I'll be wandering down that way and I'm actually passing cars all the way back to the Mornington interchange. So if we had a bus lane, that would at least do something about that. So, you know, prior to that, Mr. Mayor, I could see that this wasn't any of our business whatsoever. But I wholly would support the amendment only because of the issues that have been, the motion only because of the issues that have been added by Alderman Von Berto. And she needs to be congratulated for turning what was basically an irrelevant motion into an important one.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a brief comment and hand the chair to Deputy Mayor. I thought that the motion, and certainly the point I took up with the minister when I spoke to him, is that an express bus service between Surrail and Hobart may help to relieve some of the rat-running through Richmond that we're seeing and which promises to get a lot worse as more and more construction work goes on over the next few years on the Tasman Highway. So anything that could ease that workload, that extra traffic through Richmond, I thought was worth supporting. Thank you. Take the chair back. Any other speakers? Thank you, Alderman Edmonds.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the motion. Contrary to Alderman Muller, I think the amendments have actually made this more difficult for me to support. I'll explain why, as I spent a lot of time over the weekend considering what my choices were with this motion and discussed it with the mover of it. And we've talked about that privately. There was, I mean, words like subsidy jumped out to me, I thought, Alderman, yeah. But then again, I don't know, from past experience that the state government spends millions of dollars a year on subsidies with different bus services around. If there was a stated goal, such as reducing congestion, then it's worth looking at. The other one was, yes, I think a couple of people mentioned that this was a bit outside our reading. However, I think that that has sort of been dealt with in the fact that we've got problems that will run through our city. And we mentioned rat-running through Richmond is obviously a huge issue for residents who live out there. I can't help but quickly Google while the debate was on. I remember some election promises about Surrail-Hobart bus services, in particular, the government actually matched the promise by the opposition to double the bus services. Yet, by the time the infrastructure minister put a release out, he, well, sorry, the release that said that, double those bus services, now been deleted from the website. So I'm not sure if that's been walked away from. The other thing is, I noticed a press release by the infrastructure minister talking about congestion between Hobart and Surrail in the same year as that election in October, doesn't it, make mention of this bus service promised? I think everyone on the eastern shore is tired of the promises and tired of sort of just talking about traffic and then nothing actually seems to happen. So in that sense, I was actually a bit keen to support this motion in the sense that we should be working with Surrail. I don't think we should be expecting everyone in the Surrail municipality to be prepared to blow themselves onto a bus so we can still hop in our cars. I don't think that's the intention of the motion either, though, because there is some work to be done in our city, such as the ferries. I guess my problem with now changing the motion is I haven't read it. It's six stop points long. I think by the time we get to that, we're getting into a bit of Frankenstein's monster scenario, a really important issue to me. I think there's the quote that a camel is a horse designed by a committee. I kind of get nervous that we're sort of ending up a bit old things for all people here. I'll listen to the rest of the debate and the closing comments because they might be able to give some of my concerns. There's obviously such a huge amount of work to be done on this topic. And I kind of get nervous when we're sort of adding layers to the equation. So I guess I had concerns with the original motion. I had dealt with them privately. Now I've got to start to think about, of course, I support adding bike and obviously, if it's possible, bus infrastructure. But, I mean, there's a bridge there with five lanes on it. Three go one way, two go the other, the peak hour. If someone asked me right now if I'd support putting a bus lane on the bridge, I would say no. Because I don't think that people would really like send buses flying past them, you know, when the traffic congestion problems need to be dealt with far more than just sort of feel-good stuff. That, of course, is great to support in principle, but I'm not sure how that actually applies because it was that easy to do, it had been done years ago. So, yeah, I'm a bit confused about where this whole sort of soup ends up, I suppose. So I will continue to think about where I'm at.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Piers, and then Alderman James.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I'm a bit like Alderman Edmonds. When I read this motion, I thought, why are we interfering with Dodgers Ferry? Then I read Sunday's press ad. Mayor, where Surrail Mayor Kerry Vincent and the Clarence Mayor Doug Chipman recently met with the infrastructure minister and transport minister, Michael Ferguson, to push a case for express bus services from Surrail to Surrail to the city. And I believe, Mayor, that's where it should be. Two mayors discussing it with the minister. Not us, like Alderman Edmonds said, we're trying to change things, we're trying to do this. Talking for a person I know from Metro, he said one thing. He said, I'll tell you now, the swamp government's involved. We haven't got the buses. He said, this ferry, if a ferry runs, we can't support it with buses. We haven't got the buses yet. And here we go, calling for a service, there might even be a bus. I would rather, Mayor, leave it with you and Mayor Vincent and the minister to work it out. Now, what Alderman Von Berto has done, that could be done in a separate motion next meeting because I think it's got some merit. But on Alderman Edmonds, I'd like to see some more information on this. And also, it's all right to say ferries, it's all right to say express buses. But I wish someone had do the, the, had to know what the numbers are. Because I know myself, certain things are worried with ferries. People say they're not going to catch a ferry. So I'd like to know who's going to catch his bus? Let's do some detailed analysis to make sure it's going to be viable.
Thank you, Alderman James.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we are biting off a bit more than we can chew in this instance because of the fact that out of left field, we received additional points to the motion. And that, in fact, seems to me to make it very difficult to try to comprehend and understand exactly where we're going. It's news to me inasmuch as that Mayor Vincent and also the mayor of Clarence have in fact been negotiating and discussing this with the minister. And, okay, and it's the first time that I think this council has been privy to any discussion or information in relation to that. The second point I want to make is in relation to the fact that bicycle lanes and also bus lanes on the Tasman Highway is a huge undertaking. And in fact, not only does it require probably state government involvement, but also on a federal level. Some years ago, I put forward a proposal for another bridge across the Doolang. And that did obtain some coverage in relation to how we can handle our traffic into and out of the city. But at this point in time, I just think this motion is just a little bit too much to grapple with. It has a lot of matters that I think this council really needs to, if it's going to have a frank and open discussion, that it ought to have it basically, if it's going to be between the two councils, Surrail and Clarence, and also to perhaps with the minister responsible to meet with the councils to discuss and see exactly what the outcome or the costings are involved. It's okay to say for us to call on the state government and to float an idea such as this with all these different approaches to bicycle lanes and bus lanes, not only on the Tasman Highway, but also on the Tasman, on the Tasman Bridge. But, look, it's just opening up a huge number of circumstances. And I would have thought that if we had have had some discussion, not only with mayors, which has occurred already, but also between the councils, because, you know, we make up the council of Clarence and that's the elected representatives, and also to perhaps the community. This is a huge issue. And I before, before I would even vote for something like this, I would think we would need to know exactly what the council, Clarence Council, is involved with, what Surrail has proposed, and even have the state government. Because at the moment, I cannot see how we can be effectively involved other than to say to the state government or to provide support to the Surrail Council that we think it's a good idea. We need to do our costing, we need to know exactly what's involved here. And until such time as that, I think, well, at this stage, we'll not support the motion.
Thank you. Alison McMillan. Alderman Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Alderman Edmonds, I've wanted to listen to the debate around the table and I'm still not a lot clearer, other than going back to the original motion, which calls the state government to investigate the demand for peak hour passenger bus services, part one. Has that conversation already started between the two mayors and the state government?
We had a meeting, which I've reported. The three of us did have a talk about that. The position I took to it was, I thought it was a good idea because it would help relieve the traffic load going through Richmond.
Okay, so I guess I just need to know, have some company in that those conversations relate back to the motion that was proposed?
In that sense, yes. But the amendments to the motion have brought in a couple of other dimensions. I certainly do. Any other speakers? Alderman Walker.
So we received this motion and we've got our pack on Wednesday night. And I've got to say, there's much to liken what it's been drafted, okay? And some of those reasons are that these are things that, again, for me, have a big upside. But let's say it falls apart, let's say a bus is contracted from a provider utility, which is, I guess, the essence of this, and the bus is empty. There's not a lot of downside if something was tried and it might have worked out. So I thought the concept of how it was put together was wasn't telling the state government what to do with it. You know, consider providing subsidy for the services, investigating the market peak hour services, all of these things, meritorious. And I came into this as this motion started with a degree of comfort. Now, I'm not without sin when it comes to such procedural actions, but I've been somersaulted. I feel we've been somersaulted because these amendments weren't circulated. I've had no time to percolate on it. And they are a whole new box of dice from the intent of the motion, which is what, what infrastructure can we use at the moment to move people ahead and what subsidies are available? So that gives me a degree of, you know, sitting in a conundrum. And one of my concerns is we're almost at risk of becoming the kid in the candy shop saying, I want this, I want that, give me bus lanes and I want an off-ramp and, you know, and that road there and an intersection there. If we don't have a cogent message to the state government that we've sort of backed up with research, it's harder, it's a harder sell. And if we don't have specifically targeted things, then that's a hard sell. Perhaps with a fewer hours and some other backup things then, I would know that the cycle lane and the bus, the dedicated bus lanes are eminently reasonable. But conceptually, they sound pleasant, but it's literally just come to us now. And that makes voting on hotness a pretty low-risk, solid motion a lot less company.
Thank you. Write a reply. Miss, did you wish to? Write a reply?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank colleagues' work, thank contributions, the seating. It's been, it's always good to hear the views of colleagues. I suppose the first point that I'd make, Mr. Mayor, is that the number-one issue that Clarence residents raise with me is traffic congestion. And that's why, one of the first motions I put up in this place was calling for a peak hour passenger ferry service from the Doolang. Now, we've got the trial, and that's absolutely fantastic. And hopefully, that'll start in the very near future. That's a one-year trial. But that's because, Mr. Mayor, this chamber, this body, supported my moves to call for them. Now, there's a lot of work to be done in parts there. So it's certainly not a red-done deal, and I don't say that we've got the answer there. Mr. Mayor, with our discussions with Mayor Vincent and also with private operators, what was discussed at that meeting, and I hope you don't mind me sharing this, is there is a body of research that supports, and also one that's going to...
We need to keep the right of reply to a summary of the debate, not introducing new...
Sure, well, some cities, some cities were discussed by several people, including Alderman Muller, Mr. Mayor. So with regards to subsidies, as was trial and voting this year, Mr. Mayor...
The point of order, Mr. Mayor, I'm being representative. I don't think I mentioned subsidies.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was all needed. Sorry, my apologies.
Okay.
My apologies. So there is, there is some body of research indeed, evidence there to support the view, Mr. Mayor, that that actually does drive consumer demand. And what we want, Mr. Mayor, is less cars off the roads. We know from what, from the trial voting this year, that that is indeed what this does. Mr. Mayor, this is not only Clarence-focused, sure, it's a South Eastern solution. Indeed, Mr. Mayor, it touches on Franklin and lines and state seats, leisure council seats of Runway, Prosser and Pembroke, Mr. Mayor. And I'm contending now that people of those, all those electorals, are united in their desire, Mr. Mayor, that we see less cars on our road and that we have to take the stand and call the state government to investigate ways to deliver that. I think that's a good thing. That is a good thing. And people that don't support that, Mr. Mayor, get the result of the ballot box. So I move the motion, Mr. Mayor, and seek the support of colleagues.
Well, can I have a summary of what the motion is so that at this stage, it's not written up?
Okay.
If we could just have that summarised again, please?
So it's the motion as it stands with a new point three. So it calls on the state government to investigate dedicated, so investigate dedicated bus lanes for the Hobart service from and to Mornington. So the bus lanes would only be from and to Mornington, from Hobart to Mornington and back again. So it wouldn't be the whole length of the corridor, including the Tasman Bridge, with a view to funding and building the lanes by 2022-23. And then there would be a new point four, calls on the state government to fund it, to fund in, sorry, in its 21-22 budget, the installation of a cycling corridor on the Tasman Highway between Surrail and Hobart.
Thank you. So it's the motion as presented by Alderman Von Berto and amended by Alderman Von Berto. All those in...
If, with your indulgence, could I have your points again?
I'm sorry.
Twenty-four, where I...
Sorry, I missed the point that you had, Alderman Edmonds.
The last...
Could you have the last one read again?
The last one read again, please.
Calls on the state government to fund in its 21-22 budget the installation of a cycling corridor on the Tasman Highway between Surrail and Hobart.
So that's the motion, all those in favour? Against? Motion is lost? Moving on to item 11.2, determination of petitions, there are none. I think we're now at the point of sitting as planning authority under the Land use planning and approvals act. If we could have a movement, a second of item 11.3.1, a development application at 17 Alexandra Esmondard Bell Reef for three multiple dwellings, one existing, one new.
I'm Kerry Vincent, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Alderman Von Berto. Alderman Ewington, thank you. Do I have a second up? Thank you, Alderman Muller. Alderman Ewington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I mean, I've obviously talked about this issue a few times in relation to, we need to look at infill housing throughout our city. There's no doubt that places like Bell Reef are very popular. It's a nice area to live, close to the beach, close to services, close to amenities. Ticks all the boxes in relation to, you know, improved lifestyle for all age groups. And I can understand why someone would want to look at a location like this, which... And I can understand why someone would want to look at a location like this, which essentially, I think, what was it, 1,700 square metres of land, and looking at, you know, any opportunity to get more people living in these sorts of areas, you know, makes sense to me. I know there was, you know, a bit of feedback from some of the developers, sorry, some of the neighbours, a bit concerned about a few issues in terms of, I mean, things like lack of consultation, the character of the area, the impact on amenity, loss of views and wind tunnel. I mean, if I look at the lack of consultation, I mean, you know, we've complied with the statute, statutory requirements there and I think, you know, that's quite obvious that that's occurred. I mean, the character of the area, I mean, Bell Reef really, especially in that location, there are already quite a few double-storey and even sort of quite, even near three-storey houses in and around that location. And I think that, you know, it's inevitable that over time, there will be, you know, changes and I think, you know, these developments look, to me, are very modern, very nice, very appealing, and I think that, you know, obviously they've gone through a fair bit of work to try and come up with something that people would certainly like to buy and use. And I think that the, this sort of development is something I certainly support and I encourage my fellow Alderman to support this one. You know, we all know how difficult it is to get through planning and the officers have gone through the process and approved and advised us that it should be something that we should be approving and I strongly support that recommendation and I encourage my fellow Alderman to support this one as well.
Thank you, Alderman.
Yes, I am most reluctant to second this, but I only do so because if we don't, there'll be a major, if we don't have a motion at all, there'll be a major impact, I think, on the, on Clarence, so we have to make a decision one way or another. Mr. Mayor, I actually don't, I don't like it, I think, which, once again, this is too much and if this was in a slightly different area, it would have suffered the fate that others have in the fact that, you know, that in these areas, I think we recently refused one, um, on Detroit Church Street? Anyway, we recently refused one there and the fact was is that it was three units, but three units in such an area was out of character with the area. Unfortunately, if you have a look at the diagram, we've gone out of our way in this particular area to overcrowd and create them. So, you know, I've looked at this and the only issue that I can really raise with it is that my concern that with these shadow diagrams we get in areas like this, I'm starting to wonder whether the assessment of the solar access that neighbour properties have, is it based on the fact that to the west of us is a huge mountain range, you know, 1,100 metres? So, you know, the shadowing from that mountain range, I think, would have to have an impact on the theoretical diagram. So I might just ask whether the hours of sunlight that are being assessed in these particular matters relate to what the theoretical sun's light would be if there was no mountain range to our left and a flat horizon, or is it actually calculated by the physical sunlight that actually falls in these areas during the hours, that actually falls there before it disappears behind the 1,100 metre high Mount Wighton Range? Because I think that might be an issue. But fundamentally, I think that this infill housing like this in these areas is just not the way we should be going, but that's what the planning scheme is and that's what the planning scheme must do. So, I just find that I'm in this situation, I don't like it, I can't, I haven't really got an alternative recommendation unless the officers want to, to give me some comfort that a refusal on the basis of overshadowing might have a bit more impact. But it's one of those things and we've done it time and time again and it's not surprising that people are reluctant to second these motions because we're all fundamentally uncomfortable with them, I think, in an area like us where we're piling on, you know, units into units into units, you know, two-storey units in the backyard of an area where people have enjoyed, you know, substantially large blocks and they're being now punished for having larger than your blocks.
Thank you. Alison McMillan, Ken.
Mr. Mayor, I just wondered if there would be a question on that sunlight?
Oh, Mr. Love, were you able to illuminate us, please?
The shadow diagram to drive the application, but we also check with our own software, it's designed as a number of units. Personally can operate it, but I'm assured that the technician who uses it, is it, it's adjusted for local, the local conditions, so it's, our system should be accurate.
So the hours of sunlight are calculated by the actual hours of sunlight that the sun is in the, the sun is visible from the site?
That's correct. My understanding.
Okay, Alderman James?
Yes, I think, Mr. Mayor, we can make a decision in relation to this, this particular matter. Really is outside, in my view, the whole question of where we determine as to whether or not a proposal is, meets the actual council's planning scheme. I'd like to refer to the attachments and if you look at the diagram A-01, you can see the bulk and scale of this development. And on that diagram that's been submitted by King Lock Holdings Private Limited, you can see two-storey buildings basically sandwiched into the rear of this block and the rear setbacks are being, or have been sought as a discretion from the planning scheme because if you don't, if you had that removed, or in accordance with the planning scheme, you certainly wouldn't be able to get those two developments, those two units in that space at all. And this is where there is a problem I can see in relation to cramming these sort of dwellings into a small space and seeking a rear setback in order to do that. Now, we know that the normal rear setback in these circumstances is four metres and they are seeking a discretion from, as part of their submission, to, I think, 2.5. Now, that is on the basis that they want to build these two-storey townhouses as part of the development proposal. Now, in relation to the officer's comments, and on page 41, and it refers to overshadowing the private open space of a dwelling on an adjoining lot, the proposal, and I quote, "The proposal will cause overshadowing to part of the ground level private open space at the rear of the site at 13 Alexandra Espinard throughout the day at Winter Solps." If anybody, and I know that Alderman Walker and myself met with the Phils yesterday, and we actually observed the actual location of that rear unit and the close proximity and the overshadowing that will occur to number 13 as part of their ground level private open space. So there's two factors here that I believe do not fulfill the requirements of the planning scheme and one of them is overshadowing the private open space of a dwelling on the adjoining lot. And that is covered, as I mentioned, on page 41 in that section. The other part of it is to, is separation on page 42. Under, under the performance criteria, P3, and we refer to B, part B, it says, "Provide", I quote, "Provide separation between dwellings on adjoining lots that is compatible with that prevailing in the surrounding area." And what they're saying here in the officer's report, there are many examples in the surrounding area where dwellings are located in proximity to the rear and side boundaries of lots and on this basis, the separation between the proposed dwellings is considered compatible with the prevailing in the surrounding area," unquote. Now, that was okay under the previous planning scheme, that, and that was referred to yesterday by the Phils. Development did occur in those particular circumstances. And there we have on page 42, and providing this separation, and I'm talking about setbacks in relation to this, there are many examples of it. Of course, there are many examples of it, but that was under a different planning scheme. And now we are dealing with 2015 Clarence Inland Planning Scheme. So in other words, I will not support this and I will foreshadow a refusal if I have the support of the council that we refuse this particular development application in accordance with performance criteria, P3, clause 10.4.2, A, Roman numeral two, overshadowing will cause, overshadowing will cause impact on the property at 13 Alexander Parade. And part B, it'd be refused in accordance with performance criteria, P3, 10.4.2, B, as it does not provide sufficient separation between the dwellings.
Thank you, Alderman James. Other speakers? Alderman Pearce?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the site is 1,467 S3 metres. Now, it's got here, proposed dwellings would not exceed 6.2 metres in height. Now, if we also look on page 42, which Alderman James referred to just a minute ago, the proposed dwellings are two-storey and have a maximum height above natural ground level, that's an important part, that that is lower than the, lower than the maximum height allowed in the zone. So people could build that higher than what's there, what's going to be there. So here's the risk, you refuse it, they can come back and go higher, or you can support this as it is, 6.2. And I think that's where I'm going to support the recommendation, Mayor.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things, we're sitting as planning authority, we know that, and we have existing things with the planning scheme that we operate under. I think it's relevant to note that versus some of the objections that perhaps we might have seen in times past, there's a different flavour to how people object these days. The vexatiousness, the myopia seems to be avoided from most people to bring something in. What I mean by that is, most reasonable things that we've sort of seen in times past, you might get a neighbour that's just, shall we call it, a mudgeon and just go out of their way to really frustrate. That's one sort of the objections that we're coming across now. When we talk about, you know, we can't, we can't take into account, you know, loss of property value, that doesn't mean it's not something very real for some, or at least the fear is real. But most objections now don't, aren't normally on the fact that they don't want to see something happen on a, you know, on a larger block. I think the style of those sort of applications 10 or 15 years ago were more of the single story, two-bedroom dwelling. Plenty of those we've seen through areas over the last 10 years, big swathes of Lindisfarne have changed and, but a lot of us want to that level. So the concerns expressed by the residents were more around, you know, scale, bulk, intensity. And that's something that we have some here within the current planning scheme, but the bottom line is if you look at the, you know, concerns raised, the, you know, private, you know, site coverage and private open space for dwellings, that's, that's not overwhelmingly strong grounds. Setbacks of one metre now from the prescribed reserve right, a metre would make some difference, but it's probably not going to really make a profound difference. There is only so much that we can take into account when we sit around this table and I think Alderman Walker alluded to the level of discomfort that is dispelled. And I think there's a sense of a disconnect within the community as to a reasonable understanding of things occurring, as I said, a lot of those single-story, two-bedroom dwellings that get built in places versus some of the intensity of what's occurring these days. But there's a scheme that we're operating and there's so much scale to, if you like, look at those concerns. Where does this all come down to? I think over time it comes down to the fact that there is a paucity of inner residential, there's a paucity of correct zones to, you know, make the most of the opportunities available to provide a high density that's desired. And so the incentive through that is to see a lot of activity and a lot of intensity happening in the general residential zone. So something for us to dwell and think over when we come to the decision very soon as to whether there are enough grounds to reject this. Ultimately, I guess it comes down to something we can't consider right on this motion right at this moment, which is, what are the objective views and aspirations of the planning scheme? What do we hope to achieve and how's it going and doing that right at the moment?
Thanks, Alderman Walker. Other speakers? Rider reply?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I mean, I can understand, you know, the many neighbours having concerns, I mean, look, you know, they have a right to articulate those concerns and they certainly, it's an important part of our democracy and I mean, I know we have to take those things into consideration. I mean, as a couple of speakers have already noted, I mean, our only concern here is to address this in relation to the planning scheme as it stands. You know, there's no doubt that it's a desirable area and that, you know, more people want to live there and while, you know, we have to consider the representatives that are trying to object to this, we also have to consider the rights of the individuals that own this land and their ability to actually do with it what they like within the parameters of the planning scheme. Now, as Alderman Pearce said then, you know, they could have gone higher, they could have gone bulkier, they probably could have gone bigger. So, you know, I think we need to remember that, you know, they are, you know, you'd like to think most people are trying to sort of be considerate of the other people that live around them and try and find a compromise that they think will get through, get through the scheme. Now, you know, we all know that our staff are the most professional planning staff out there in the state and if they run their eye over this and think that it's something that, you know, that ticks all the boxes, well, I for one would consider that that's a pretty good reason for us to support this proposal as well. When you look at it, you know, the minimum lot size for units, I think it's 350 square metres, I think that's correct? 325? You know, we've got a lot here which is 1,400 square metres and we've still only got, you know, three dwellings on there, so they're hardly trying to cram it on there. I think one of the reasons for that is because they're keeping the front. If they started from scratch, I'm sure they'd probably spread them out a little bit further, which for their own reasons, that's what they're entitled to do. And I think, you know, when you look at, I mean, the footprint of each of the other, the two new units are 105 square metres, so, you know, they, you know, some people like that little bit of extra height with a chance to try and get a little bit of a view themselves, which, you know, everyone has a right to do that as well and try and maximise the quality of the residence they're building. And I think, you know, they've done that. Like I said at the beginning, I think the buildings, they are a nice modern look, I mean, some people might not like them, I think they look great. But I think really this comes down to, the other consideration I think we need to look at is, if we reject this, and we've had a couple of incidents or one major one in the last couple of months or so, which we refused after and went against the officer's recommendation, and where did we end up? All right? Now, we have also a responsibility to all our taxpayers to not incur extra costs on something that most likely would occur if we voted against this one, and I think we've got to take that into consideration as well. You know, I for one wouldn't be happy to see us vote this down and then be left footing a bill.
Thank you, Alderman Ewington. The motion is, the officer's recommendation for those in power? Against? The motion is carried. Could we recall Alderman Blommi, please?
11.3.2 is a development application, 21 Banjura Street, Harra, for garage and carport. I can have a move in a second, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Walker. Second is Alderman Ewington. Alderman Walker?
No, I'll have the officer's word speak to it.
Thank you. Alderman Ewington? Any speakers? That case, I'll put the motion recommending approval, subject to conditions and advice of those in favour. Carried unanimously, thank you. Eleven point three point three, development application at three two two two, South Arm Road, South Arm, for two multiple dwellings. Thanks, Alderman Ewington. Do I have a second, Alderman Longley? Thank you, Alderman Ewington.
Um, I think, yeah, well, I mean, I, once again, on the same sort of points I raised in the last, um, application there, I think, uh, you know, with these sort of areas, they're, um, trying to open up people to come and visit our, our great city, um, and also look at an opportunity to improve the dwelling that they live in, and, um, you know, once again, I think it's complied with all the, uh, the, uh, planning scheme, and, uh, I think it'll be something we should be supporting.
Thank you, Alderman Longley. Other speakers? That case, um, no other speakers against, I'll put the motion for all those in favour. Motion is carried unanimously. Item eleven point three point four is a development application for sixty-five Roaring Beach Road, South Arm, for a dwelling, and a change of use to visitor accommodation. I can have a move in a second, please. Alderman Ewington, thank you. Second is Alderman Longley, thank you. Alderman Ewington?
Thank you, sir. I thought I was seconding that one, I thought someone else was.
Um, well.
Anyway, look, uh, you know, I, I look at this one, and, um, certainly a very spectacular piece of land, um, and you can understand why someone would want to come along and build a, a property like this in that sort of a location. Um, you know, the, uh, the couple of concerns that were raised by the representatives there in relation to, um, the, uh, the view from, what's the reserve we're doing?
Potter's Hill.
Potter's Hill Reserve. Um, look, you know, whether it was moved fifteen metres further away or, or, and I think, um, I don't think it'd make much difference to the view, or moving it to, to comply with that, I, I think, you know, really wouldn't make a lot of difference. But I think, you know, once again, it comes down to two things, it complies with the scheme, um, it's supporting activity, building activity in our community, um, and I think it's something that, um, if it's been approved by the, the band stuff, I think we should be supporting this one, and giving the people the opportunity to, to use this land and create what will be a pretty spectacular building, and, uh, and, and it's another location for visitors to come and, uh, spend time in our city, and, uh, I, I encourage my fellow Alderman to support this one.
Thank you, Alderman Longley. Other speakers? Alderman Kennedy, and then Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd just like to get a little bit more comfort around this one. The residents that I've spoken to with regards to the DA are generally in support of the development in principle, but there is some concern around the house being of large scale and proposed to be located at the very top of the property, which is thirty-one metres setback from the rear boundary, meaning that it will sit just below the eastern boundary of Potter's Hill Public Reserve. Now, I think the planning scheme acceptable solution setback is fifty metres?
That's right.
Um, Potter's Hill Public Reserve is very well managed by this council, uh, for the community of Clarence, Tasmania and beyond, and has become a popular spot for visitors. Um, and there is a concern that the size of the proposed roofline and its proximity to that rear boundary will impact on the visitor experience, the visual attraction that the site offers for many to enjoy. Um, perhaps Mr. Lovell can provide me with some advice that will give comfort to those representatives that have made contact with me that there will not be any visual impact from Potter's Hill Public Reserve?
Mr. Lovell?
Through Mr. Mayor, some research went into the, uh, project from the developer, including a visual assessment, but we also undertook our own. Um, uh, the staff, the planners inspected the site, uh, from, from the reserve, and generally the view was that it's a very large property, um, from the location, uh, of the reserve. Uh, it won't be an obvious structure, um, because, just because of its setting and, and the small size compared to the size of the property. So that, that was where we were coming from, I guess, in, in our review, that, um, the level of significance wasn't, uh, wasn't unreasonable, um, in the context of the site, um, and, and what could be seen from the reserve.
Thank you, Alderman James.
Yeah, look, um, I'll just have to, um, make a follow-up on a comment that my colleague Alderman Ewington made, and he said it was in accordance with the planning scheme. Well, it's not specifically in accordance with the planning scheme because on page one hundred and three, under the rural resource zone, it says the proposal does not comply. This is the acceptable solution, as, as acceptable solutions. As the proposal does not comply, as the dwelling is set back thirty-one metres to the western boundary, which is.
Just a point of clarification, Alderman James, um, even though it doesn't apply to an acceptable solution, if it conforms to a performance criteria.
Yeah, but I am about to continue on that vein.
But, but it would be incorrect.
You're entering the debate.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm, uh, making a point of what you said, it didn't comply with the scheme.
Well, I hadn't finished.
If it complies with the performance criteria, it does comply with the scheme. But if you're about to make that point, I'll look forward to it.
No, well, I think, Mr. Mayor, you've entered into the debate, and.
No, 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 look, I, I'd be quite happy for you now to clarify how you think it doesn't conform to the performance criteria.
Can I go back and repeat my earlier comments?
Well, if you need to.
Well, only to endorse the comments that in fact it doesn't comply with the planning scheme, except that the officers have gone through and made a submission in relation to why it has been, uh, supported by the officers in as much as the site is twenty-six hectares as an area. Nevertheless, it does not comply with the acceptable solutions, and therefore there is not, in my view, a reasonable assumption that's been made by the officers to say that it should be relaxed to that degree. If you look at the actual, uh, proposal, look at it, it's almost like a, a, an aircraft hangar in a rural setting, and it's, um, and just by the very nature of being a visitor accommodation, uh, uh, centre, it's going to cause a number of traffic movements in and out of that place, and the representative or the person who actually put in a submission today referred to the amount of traffic that's coming from this particular proposal. So in actual fact, it's great to have a visitor accommodation within Clarence. We all accept that. Nevertheless, this size and scale and bulk, and the relaxation, which is part of the acceptable solutions, which says it's not in accordance with the setback, and the officers have basically said it's on twenty-six acres or hectares, and therefore it's not an issue. It backs onto a book land setting, it's in close proximity to coastal reserve, and I would have thought that this particular proposal would be a lot better elsewhere located, when in fact we could enjoy it rather than have it close proximity to, to the coast. I think this particular, uh, proposal is great, but in its current location, it's over the top, its bulk scale is just not in keeping with amenity of the area, and I will not support it.
Thank you. Other speakers?
I hope that will answer your question.
Well, um, we can talk about it later. Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, but I do have some concerns about this. I know that the planning scheme doesn't insist that you be good neighbours, but wouldn't it be nice if there could just be a bit of give and take and compromise? This is a visitor centre, it's going to bring visitors to the area, there's a reserve that those visitors could enjoy right on their doorstep, but maybe not quite right on their doorstep. There, there's plenty of land, it could be further away, everybody could be happy. Um, I just wish that there was a solution where people could sit down and, and do that. I've only just recently discovered Potter's Ridge and the labyrinth up there, and I'd hate that view to be spoiled by, um, a development that is unnecessarily close to the boundary. So I'm not sure which way to go on this one.
Thank you, Alderman Warren. Other speakers? Alderman Edmonds?
Yeah, just very briefly, I appreciate the debate and also the questions from Alderman Kennedy. Um, I just want to make a point, um, relating to the, the dictation that was given on this today, and flag that, um, in the next few meetings, I might look at drafting something that looks about addressing this issue, that it's not the first time ever that people want to hear about the development applications. And it's not to point fingers, but to rather look at past experiences and figure out a way that can keep that sort of stuff in the bud, um, be a bit muddling faster, to use your say Clarence, and actually try and talk to people who, um, that feel can end up as a meeting scenario and some of this stuff, and they don't quite have that things whether they're on the mainland, as, as, uh, people who might have bought a house when they were kids, took a job on the mainland, rented it out, come back for Christmas and something shot up next to them, and that actually happened to someone I, um, spoke to during the campaign. So bearing in mind that campaign was two years ago, perhaps, um, I'd just like to put on people's radar that perhaps we could work together, the talk plus stuff, et cetera, um, and the community, and work on developing something that's a bit more, um, comprehensive around how we get word out, and there's a DA, so people don't feel aggrieved about that, and that then flows through to the rest of their, um, uh, rights with, um, issues. So if you, if you argue it's trying to be all things for people, but I actually strongly think, and I've said this before, that, um, developments get way more public buy-in, um, and support, and way more likely to succeed if they're well communicated and supported by the council doing interviews and sort of getting people across what's happening. So I'd just like to put out on people's radar, um, that I'll be looking at doing that over the coming weeks, months. If anyone's going to feedback, I'd love to take it before we put motion to the council.
Thank you, Alderman Longley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not really going to go in this, but into this one. Um, you, the, the questions have been raised about, um, why can't we have some discussions with our neighbours and all the rest of it? And I think this has been, issue has been raised for many years, and, uh, and I recently, I'll just remind Alderman that about eighteen months ago, I put a motion, uh, to, uh, explore the possibility of, of introducing a stop-the-clock mechanism to allow for mediation before the matter comes before council. So, um, although, uh, you know, I, I can't see any issues, um, with this one, because as planning authority, we have to deal with what is put before us, um, and we have to make the decision in relation to, um, um, not the acceptable solutions, and Mr. Mayor, you're quite right, but, but according to the performance criteria. So, um, a lot of those are subjective matters, um, and where they are subjective to the point, uh, we are incapable as a, as a planning authority of coming to a different viewpoint to that as the officers, but, um, where they are specific, and the performance criteria gives a specific number, um, then there is no capacity to take an alternative perspective on those particular numbers. But, um, just in closing, I might pay, um, since I don't, since I've never heard back as to what became of the motion that we actually passed to this council to introduce a stop-the-clock mediation phase inside these things, to allow for the very things that could have happened. There's been a couple of matters tonight where the neighbours haven't been consulted, and in fact we were asked, and one, to refuse the, go to, um, adjourn the application to allow some mediation and consultation to occur. Now, at this stage, the only way you can do this, um, is to actually, um, for the proponents or the, the objectors to, um, appeal the decision whichever way council goes, and then the first thing that happens is that the planning commission, the tribunal has a mediation phase. But how much simpler would it be if we could just, following a, according to the motion that we passed last year, uh, move towards a, a, a process where when these sorts of concerns come up, when objectors have these sorts of issues, we can then have a mediation table around the table. And a lot of the time it would be the requisite, it would be along the lines I've just outlined, sorry, the performance criteria, the performance criteria. Now, if you want to be a good neighbour, you can adjust them, but there's no obligation to do so. And a lot of that would be good explanation, good work. But however, um, we have been given a, a, a mo, uh, an issue that says, uh, within forty-two, uh, days of an application being submitted, we must deal with that application on its merits, not what we would like it to be, or what we would not like it to be. So, um, just perhaps you might give some clarification of what became of that motion that this council passed.
Uh, certainly, Alderman Mulder. Uh, we won't, I won't go into that right now, but I will ask the general manager to take on notice and, uh, um, review that and bring it back and let us know where we're at.
I would shudder to think, Mr. Mayor, that it was ignored.
Oh, I'm certain it wouldn't be, uh, Alderman. Any other speakers? Alderman Pearce?
Mayor, I support the motion that's in front of us, it's twenty-sixth day of the side, the maximum height is eight metres, which I think is pretty reasonable, yes, it's a bit closer to the boundary than we'd probably like to see, but also one of the things I'm, I'm hearing about the scheme and people not being made aware and all this, what I tell people, what I tell people is look on the council website once a week, once a fortnight, all our applications are there, and I think some people just use this as an excuse. It's all they really want to, it's advertised in a very brief, and they really want to say you haven't been made aware, that's up to you.
Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
I, I won't rego over all the other points that have been said, I think most of the matters that need to be discussed obviously have been raised, I think the questions have been raised. Uh, I will somewhat promptly enter into the matter that, um, when it comes to representations, and there's a degree of, um, agreement that's been expressed to us, and I won't go into the merits or otherwise on that, but best practice, uh, would be not to be telling people that your only way to know whether there's going to be eight and a half stories or metres next to your house in a fortnight's time is to check the paper every week. Well, best practice would be rather ensuring that we have the mechanisms so that, um, the information just percolates rather than that people have to just, um, you know, dig it down. And on that end, I think that we do a pretty reasonable job with no buying in store neighbours by and large, because there are occasions where it falls short, and our friends at Australia Post, I guess, are part of the team communicating it to them, but generally it's not working bad, and I think we are getting more provision in the social media channels to perhaps help make some of those things available. So, um, it will be interesting to see more on the Alderman Mulder's, uh, motion of this that yesterday he got to, and, uh, people all the way to Alderman Edmonds, uh, coming in motion, you know, maybe with this.
Thank you, and I do note that one of the issues of representation was the public consultation process, so I do see that, uh, those points as being relevant to this event. Um, any other speakers? Write a reply, I think Alderman Ewington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'll sort just a moment address the, the comments made there about the, um, the mediation process. While in principle that might sound great, and I think, um, in an ideal world, we'd all be able to sit down and agree, but the reality is different people have different opinions on what is, looks good, what looks bad, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate. And I have my concerns that we'd ever be able to come up with anything that, we'll deal with every scenario, and all we're going to be doing is creating more, another layer of, of talking unless, you know, we get to the point where we can discuss it in a little bit more detail, because we do have a way of dealing with it at the moment, and, and the mediation is notifying, letting people put their, their, uh, their two bucks worth in, and then ultimately we've got to make a decision based on what the planning scheme says. Um, so, you know, and just getting back to some of the other points, mate, I mean, you know, I mean, like I said, one person's, might look at a building like this and think, what a disgusting horrible thing, I hope to have that in my, in my view. Other people might look at it and think, what a fantastic piece of architecture, um, and I think it adds value to the site. So trying to find a way that where everyone agrees, um, you know, we all know that's never going to happen. Um, you can understand why they would want to put this, this house in this location, because it would get, you know, amazing views, and to be honest, they have a right to do that. It's their land, you know, and they have a right to do that, and I can, like I said, I can understand why they would want to do it. Um, and I mean, it comes back to the point I've raised before now, I mean, ultimately, you know, it's gone through the process, it's been ticked off by the planning officers, um, and I would encourage my fellow Alderman to support it, because I think it's the right thing to do, um, and I think it'd be a, um, you know, it's our job to, to follow the process, and I think this, um, this development has, has done that, and, and we should support it. Thank you.
Thank you. So the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice of a new dwelling and visitor accommodation. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Moving on to eleven point three point five, it's a section forty-three A amendment, uh, proposed rezoning in two multiple dwellings at ten Lineup Road, Monique Bay. Move in a second, please. Thank you, Alderman Walker. Moved it. A second, please, Alderman Kennedy. Thank you. Alderman Walker?
Um, I think we know the history over the last eighteen months. I think we know the history over the last eighteen months with various paying of properties in our municipality across Tasmania, some might, some might have had others. Given the current circumstances, given the challenges that that parish was facing before it happened to market, the likelihood of ongoing sort of use in the present form doesn't seem too likely, coupled with the fact that this is situated lock, stock and two smoking barrels within a residential area means I think this is the natural evolution. However, we may feel about the aesthetics and ambience of the current structure that is built on that property isn't really a matter for the, for us as sitting as a planning authority. So with that, I'm supporting the officer's recommendations.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Yes, look, it's an interesting one and I think Alderman Walker made the comment in relation to the Anglican Church's fulfillment of its, of its mission and to obviously sell a number of its properties, which it has done and there's still, one or two that are still on the, on the, on the, on the board. It's very interesting to know that we had an informal discussion with some members of the community about eighteen months ago when this particular church was raised and it was discussed as, as a means to retain it. And there was some momentum and a number of councils in this chamber were present at that informal meeting and I'm looking at one or two of them as I, as I look around the chamber. And yet, it's much to say that there was a lot of support for the retention of this particular church as it was a, a public asset, it's been there for many, many years and it was part of the framework and amenity of the area. And also too, we have had some success in relation to a church or building in Chapman Street, some ten fifty.
Alderman James, what we kept to, any issues involved in this application?
Yeah, look, I know, I know, I'm just trying to say, Mr. Mayor, and that's the second time you've interrupted, when I'm about to continue to draw, to draw parallels, no, it is, no, to draw parallels, Mr. Mayor, between Chapman Street and how that building was retained and how in fact this particular building could be retained for the benefit of the public. On page, and I can refer to the documentation, sorry, on page one fifty-six, and it says, "Part of the planning scheme is a part loop or section forty-three A when we're linking it to develop application, part H to protect public infrastructure and other assets and enable the orderly provisions and coordination of public utilities and other facilities for the benefit of the community." And if we look at this particular development, what's happening, and okay, it's within the strus, it's within the urban growth boundary and on page or attachment eight, we have this quaint little church which is going to be demolished. There's no question about that. This church will be demolished to make way for two multi-story dwellings and the beautification and the amenity of this area will be at a loss as a result of this. Now, I know it's within the urban growth boundary, I know it's general residential or that's what they're proposing to change it from what it's currently, I think, community or whatever the terminology is, that, community purpose, thank you, from community purpose to general residential. And they're going to do that by section forty-three A, which is, as we've discussed on a number of occasions, Mr. Mayor, a double whammy in, with regard to the development and also the changing of the zone. Now, the only good thing about this from my perspective is that if council certifies this, then it's going to go out to public consultation anyway. So it, it will get an airing and it will be able to be considered by the public. At this point in time, there's no consultation. Section forty-three A, the initiation, excuse me, of an amendment to the planning scheme does not, and it does not have that benefit or that property of having the public involved in the consultation. It's a shame that this little church will be removed, destroyed and has become part of the landscape of, of Monique Bay for many, many years. And I feel for those persons that tried to gather enough momentum and money to try to keep this and we had meetings with those people and now their only resource, as probably most of the people in this chamber will support this, because it will be demolished if, if it gets a tick in the box as part of the consultation down the track. I'd like the idea and I'm going to support the next motion that's coming up and give my views on that in relation to the urban growth boundary and how we need to have it reviewed because of a number of reasons. But in this particular case, I will not support the initiation of the amendment because I believe that at this stage, once it's James mentored, then it's very little that the people can do about it other than voice their concerns and the council has already certified it for that process and it's very, very difficult to change the movement or the process the council has initiated. So unfortunately, I will support the retention of this church.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Mulder?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just rise very briefly to find out that this is a different church to Alderman James, kind of church to what Alderman James is referring to when the Anglican diocese has been dealing with. Most of those churches were in small areas where they were established by local communities, usually rural ones, and those, and those have gone. This church, like the one up in Cambridge Road, which has long since become residential, was part of when the housing departments nineteen sixties pushed to have churches as part of the amenity of, of the new greenfields housing, sort of like a housing estate. And so, you know, this, this church and I've been, and I've worshipped in it, have also, you know, they're slightly different to that sort of a community thing and this church has been struggling for many, many years to actually be a viable congregation in its own right. So, you know, it's going to happen and it's going to happen. But as, as to the criticality of the amenity of the area, Alderman James has mentioned his desire for seven-lane bridge, might not point out that I think the seven-lane bridge across the Tasman Highway that he got so much publicity for would have gone clean over if not straight past this house here. So I'm not too sure that it is such an integral part of the community.
Thanks, Alderman Mulder. Other speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Miss Mayor, I'm going to support the officer's recommendation, but I'm going to support it because I actually want to see the public consultation on this. And whilst Alderman James believes that public consultation can't change this process, I don't believe that's the case. We've had situations where the public consultation has actually meant that council has not continued with the process of initiation and certification. So the reason that I'm going to support the officer's recommendation is because I want to see that public consultation. As Alderman James said, a number of Aldermen met with concerned residents of the area. Those residents wanted to see this particular building and land kept for community use and they actually wanted council to take on that responsibility. Now, as that turned out, that didn't occur, but I believe that we actually need to gauge the community sentiment before we take the decision to actually change the zoning from community purpose to general residential. So that's the reason I would be supporting this particular officer recommendation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Right reply, Alderman Walker.
I appreciate everyone's contributions and Alderman Mulder is indeed wrong and maybe has some of the representations of sufficient gravity and weight that it remains in its current community purpose zoning. I would say that the, the fact that this is ended up where it is suggests that, that zoning is unlikely to be the most optimal zone and it is possible that if we were to go down that, that pathway that remains in that zoning, that first thing we'll know according to its uses that Alderman James ended up with is that we'll go back into some other form of worship, perhaps maybe a very own church of Scientology here. Let's work this through and see where we end up.
So the motion for the chair is the officer's recommendation that we initiate the draft amendment and approve two dwellings. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Eleven point three point six is another section forty-three A amendment in regard to retirement village at a number of addresses on the east hill and highway. I understand that Alderman Newington, you have an alternative motion?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I think I should.
Which has been circulated?
I have it by email and also by paper.
So I have a second of Alderman Newington's motion. Thank you, Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, we seem to be spending a lot of time on two things. We're talking about how to interpret the planning scheme and most recently we've gone through looking at some changes that need to be made to the planning scheme in relation to some of the zoning of some of the properties in, in our, in our city. And I think before we even look at the use of, of this particular site, you know, it's on one side there's an existing, what do you call it? Retirement village and then next to it, a holiday park sort of thing. So, look, on, on face value, it looks like an extension of the retirement village would seem to make sense in, in from a, from a land use point of view. But, and then obviously we identified that there are quite a few other properties throughout this, throughout the city where there was, you know, lines on a bit of paper that said one thing, one thing could be done on one side of the road and another thing on the other. And I think, you know, dealing with this, this particular location and sorting it all out is something that I think all of us are, are supportive of. And I suppose my motivation for asking for a deferment of, of this particular application was to, to show the developers and the community and from a council perspective that we're here to help people navigate through this whole process and not be seen to, to knock things back just because it doesn't necessarily comply with what the, the land use strategy actually says at the moment. I think everyone in this room here and, and most of the community would obviously say that, you know, we certainly do need to look at providing a range of different options for, for retirement living for people in our, in our community. And one of the things that we, that we know is, I mean, the, the couple of representatives or the deputations that were provided today, thank you, Alderman Kennedy, identified that there were some people out there that have already purchased, you know, the opportunity to, to live in this, this, this village and also too, the people that are already in the village are supportive and at expanding. So, you know, you can see that there is community support. But on the other hand, and this is one of the things that I think, you know, made me want to look at deferring this, was that there are some people that look at the village itself and have identified that there is not a lot of greenery there, there's not a lot of public open space. And I think we'd all agree that even though there's demand there, I think we, we've got a role to actually help the developers and create it, something that we think is a little bit, you know, in terms of the amenity that's provided for the residents, is a little bit better than what this necessary, this proposal is, is, is looking like. You know, while we know some people just want their house and not necessarily a big backyard, I think, you know, having a little bit of extra greenery around the, the location would, would certainly be of benefit. And I suppose it's just an opportunity for the council staff and us as Aldermen to maybe look at those sort of things and try and find something that, that will comply with that, know the things that are identified by the planning staff in most of the while they weren't as happy to, to support it. And then obviously the, the land use chances that needed to occur there. And we all know how busy the, the planning commission's going to be in the next six to twelve to eighteen months. And if there's anything we can do to help the developers move down that path, I, I think it's our obligation to do that. We also need to stimulate the building industry and not, you know, and be out there saying, you know, we're open for business and that we're here to help and our first reaction of anyone coming to us to get anything off the ground, I honestly believe should be how we approach it. And I think that giving us the opportunity to sit down with the developers, have a, think about some of those things that, that we've identified as the council staff and I think some of us also identified, we'd, we'd be happy to look at slight changes. And if we can, you know, like I said, help the developers come up with what is an identified demand in our community, that's quite clear that is learned out there. And I think at the end of all this, if we can speed that process up, keep the building industry going, give these people that have already pre-purchased or put a, put a deposit down on these properties, I think, you know, it wouldn't be the right thing for us to do to just knock it on the head. And I think this way we can make it all happen a little bit quicker hopefully and then make sure that those changes occur. So I encourage my Aldermen to give the opportunity for us to, to work through those issues and really find a solution that's a win-win-win for everyone and, and I think we can certainly achieve that by this deferral and then a chance to sit down and talk about it.
Thank you.
It's very brief here, there's not much more to cover after Alderman Newington's comments there, but I think defer is the key point here. I would love the developers to think about what they can do in a creative sense in the way of greenery and a little bit more space there, but having listened to the deputations earlier today, I can only support this.
Other speakers?
I'd just like to approve its comments made and also thank Alderman Newington for working with the officers on a, on a pathway forward. Without any action, this was putting a very tough spot around, you know, really wanting to give incremental support, but they're in a tough spot. So it's definitely got my support. Appreciate all the comments and I don't hear much of it because it's all been covered up so well.
Thank you. Alderman Mulder?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be supporting this motion. I think that it, there's been some representations of that, but yes, I think it's an appropriate extension. I think, I know a few people who live in that area, they're very, very happy there, they like the idea of communal living and those sorts of things are good and it's a pretty good use of the land, I would think, overall going into the future. So I have one reservation and I've, and I'm aware that the developers think that there is a need for extending the urban growth boundary of this particular thing, but of course, that would, the actual amendment is something that is signed off by the planning commission, not by Clarence Council here tonight. So I would be quite happy to, to, to put some of these issues to the, to the planning commission rather than just kill it off before it's even taken its first breath. So as an extension of an existing use. So I'll support this one as well, but I'll also be mindful that if, if it comes back, and I hope that some of the issues, and I think they've been raised in the past by Alderman Alberto, things about like internal pedestrian access and it's supposed to be some sort of like that, I would really like to see developers put their mind to that. And in that case, I would be minded irrespective of whether we can achieve anything, whether points one or two are achieved or be, that at least we've got something that we can put up to the planning commission and test the theory that we don't need to amend the boundary first.
Thank you. Alderman Warren, I think, and then Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have two minds about this. I agree with almost everything that's been said so far. I think if we were to vote on the original motion and follow our very professional planning department's advice and it was lost, then we would be doing these things anyway. So we would be working informally with the developers to say, yeah, good idea, needs some tweaking, et cetera. My, my struggle with, with the alternative motion is not so much the substance of it as the, the reasons in part C, and I find the first and the third dot point to be quite political in nature and almost like picking a winner and saying we're supporting a particular developer rather than saying we recognize the need for more retirement living in our municipality and let's look at a range of options rather than backing one particular developer. Similarly, the, the third dot point, the need to stimulate the building sector is a political viewpoint which is not necessarily held by everybody. I think we're doing so much stimulating of the building sector at the moment that there aren't enough builders. I think I heard somebody say earlier they couldn't get a builder because they were too busy working on somebody else's project. And we have a, a number of systemic issues with underinvestment in trades and training and, and things that contribute to that. So it makes it difficult for me to support this motion because I don't want to have those words put in my mouth, but I support the intention. So we'll see how it goes.
Thank you, Alderman James.
Yes, in relation to this proposal for the Chair, it's interesting that B1 states that the southern Tasmanian regional land use strategy is sufficiently amended to enable an urban expansion in this location. Now, how are we going to do that? Does that mean that the developer and council are going to try to approach the TPC or the minister? And this will be done on a basis of trying to speed up the process of changes to strus? It just seems to me that, that I would have liked to us to have debated this issue in its format and to basically take it to the next step. With Atkins, we won on that one. I put up the proposal to council, council accepted it, it went to the minister, it went to the TPC, it went to the the policy unit, it went back to the TPC. It was a roundabout issue, but we got that up. We changed the urban growth boundary at Ropie. And I think this one should have been taken that course as well to actually approach or write to the minister as we did with the Cambridge and Pass Road proposal. We really did a great job there because we took on board the developers' concerns and the council supported the motion to write to the minister. This is a sort of a nice-to-have sort of motion. It's saying on the one hand that strus needs to be modified. And to do that, you have to actually go through a process. And we all know that strus cannot be amended pursuant to section forty-three A of LUPA. However, there is a process to write to the minister and to the policy unit to be able to do that. The other point that's been made here in three, the proposed development control is being sufficiently amended to address the concerns outlined in the council report. How are you going to do that? Are we going to have a sit-down discussion with the developers and also the council officers to find different ways in which the development controls can be sufficiently amended? The council officers can't do that. They can only work in accordance with what is being submitted here for discussion. I think it's a nice-to-have, but to defer consideration of this, we'll end up in just a talk fest between the developers and council because at the end of the day, nothing can be decided unless this council decides to, as it did with the Cambridge and Pass Road proposal, to put forward to the minister a proposal to change the urban growth down. I remember when this came to council back in two thousand and seven, whatever it was, prior to, under the old planning scheme and it was zoned accordingly. It just makes sense that this particular development, which is great. I do knock that area in council elections and people are happy there. They like that style of living. And by just basically saying, let's have a talk fest in relation to this, it will achieve nothing. Whereas we did a great job with the Cambridge Pass Road proposal. Why don't we do it here?
Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will be supporting this alternate motion. I'll be honest, I would have supported the officer's recommendation and refused the application. But I think this gives capacity for the applicant if they choose, and obviously they may not choose to go down this path, but to choose to do the work, to look at the issues that were highlighted in the officer's report for the initial, the previous refusal motion and actually consider those and get those sorted before they come back to us. I think this gives everybody the capacity to do that and to take their time to get it sorted.
Like Alderman Chong, I think what she says here was spot on. Believe it or not, you know, development was to, you know, we're going to talk to our staff. Isn't that great? That's what we've been warned about early on tonight. I think that's the way to go. I'm very happy with this alternative motion by Alderman Newington. I think it's good. I think we're saying, look, let's just have a look at a few things, get it right, get it right and then progress.
But I also commend Alderman Newington for putting in spade work to make this motion a reality. This is something that I think most of us around the table lamp on the high degree of confidence are made for. And what it's trying to achieve, it's trying to salvage the proposal that came before us but that was listed for refusal because that fell short on a few items. And this allows those to be ironed out. And then in all likelihood, coming back to council and things being lined up in a way that there's a coherent and cogent argument that had for the resulting component, which is something that people shouldn't stress about because the existing lifestyle village is functioning well. The residents are happy and talk about things like density as well. You know, go across the road and down line, you find the highest density accommodation in the whole of Tasmania, not just Clarence. So bear that in mind, bear that in mind.
Residential?
Yes.
Community, yeah, not what community. There were some comments around we shouldn't be picking winners and that might be true, but GPO is going to be picking winners and it's certainly ones that actually pay rates for their residents.
Okay, any further speakers? Right of reply?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, you know, I welcome the input from my fellow Aldermen and I think, you know, it's quite obvious there's a fair bit of support gathered in this part. Look, you know, there would have been a couple of different ways to do it, but I think, you know, this one, you know, it goes in with the united front. You know, when we go to the planning commission, the developer will be in a position to say, hey, the Clarence Council signed off on this. Makes it easy to deal with all the land use issues there, the grave boundary side of things. You know, we're not favouring a developer, we're favouring this developer on his piece of land. So it's not saying that we're going to, you know, we're not picking winners or whatever. We're picking this particular project. And while Alderman Warren might be concerned about the political nature of the statements of the wording, look, the reality is everything we do is political. You know, you can take that aim on everything that we do. And I believe that, you know, we have an obligation to support industry and to make it easy to have people have jobs. And while it might be busy right at the moment, these sort of projects are something that might be being built in two or three years' time and the jobs that are being filled at the moment are being, you know, the work that's out there might be playing a football. You know, this might come online, you know, down the track. And I think they're the sort of things that we need to remember. So, you know, and the bottom line is, I mean, you know, people want to live in our city and we should be encouraging people to do that. So thank you to the fellow Aldermen that have been supporting and I hope that we can send out the right message to the community and these guys and, you know, keep it in the mix and hopefully allow them to deliver on this in the future.
So the motion for the Chair is to defer consideration of the application. All those in favour? Against? Carried. And that concludes our business planning authority. Moving on to item eleven point five point one, that we transfer two thousand four hundred from the open space preservation fund for the purposes of a land survey. Thank you, Alderman James. Thank you, Alderman Kennedy. Does anyone wish to speak to this? Very straightforward, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. And now moving on to eleven point ten point one, which is to resolve to approve delegations under the land use planning approval rate. Move Alderman Peers. Second, Alderman Newington. Alderman Peers?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, we've discussed this, that's pretty, pretty good, you lead, so I support the recommendation, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Newington?
Yeah, I certainly do as well. I mean, I suppose tonight we've had a couple of items that have come up with a couple of representations that we all thought, well, that's a no brainer. We should be looking that one through. The timing will save some of the council staff to, you know, prepare reports to us so they can spend a bit more time dealing with some of the other projects that are a little bit more difficult to deal with. I think that's a positive thing as well. So I certainly think that this is a move in the right direction. And the historical changes we've made in this over the last twelve months have still shown that we've come out and made the right decision in most situations. So I think it's a good step in the right direction.
Thank you, other speakers? Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a matter of natural justice. I believe that if two neighbours either side of a proposed development put a representation, they have a right to be heard in council in a public meeting. So I do not support this change.
Thank you, other speakers?
There you go. Alderman Warren's comments and most of you know how it was when we discussed this with the one representation sometime earlier in the year. And there was a sunset clause in relation to this to come back to council. And I vividly recall, one of our members is in fact said that if they had their time over again, they would in fact have voted against it. At that time, they voted for it. But nevertheless, this is basically denying the transparency, accountability of the decision-making process as far as the representatives, two of whom could make a representation. This is basically cutting them out of it because that would then be under delegation to the officers. So you start in small steps. We started with one and then over time against momentum. Then it's two and then the comparison next year, hopefully not before election, but next year. There would be this review, I would have thought, and therefore the comment could be raised, well, Hobart has three, Gonorki has four. What are the other councils doing in relation to this? And therefore that becomes a sort of a pivotal sort of point for which council will say, Hobart has that many, why doesn't Clarence have that many? I think it's a different ballgame, quite frankly. There needs to be what we call, not consistency, but nevertheless what the particular council environment can take and how it can reach out to its people to be able to put forward a representation. If we're going to go this way, then again, it's going to deny two people or two groups of people who in fact may have a counter view in relation to a representation. They may be in favour of it and we don't have that, those sort of proposals very often, but nevertheless we may have. And we don't have that debate that would be presented to us in an open forum such as this. Whereas under the existing system, I will basically support that because that is, that's the nature of what was passed previously. So in summary, I believe it's denying the representatives the right to have their day in the council via any means to put in a representation in particular in relation to a DA. And that, I think, is basically contrary to what we believe in as far as the democratic process and being able to listen to a representative's point of view, whether we agree with it or not. I will not support this.
Thank you, other speakers? Alderman Berto?
I'm sorry, you have? Oh, thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. And, Mr Mayor, I wasn't going to talk on this because my views on this are very well known. I think it's a very, this is a sound recommendation or officer's recommendation tonight. It's actually backed up by significant research as provided in the officer's report. And as I think Alderman James outlined in my, a pleasure to be able to do it for somebody else, but Hobart City Council does require three representations, but all four, I think, also Hewin Valley four as well. We're moving to two. And I think that's a very sound and sensible way forward. And I refer colleagues, Mr Mayor, to two point three, the officer's report on page two hundred and sixty-five, where the officer advised that when considering opportunities for greater efficiencies and better meeting expectations, a useful starting point is to compare the ratio of planners to annual application numbers with other vehicles in councils using application data compiled relevantly. Hobart City Council has one planner per ninety-three applications. Kingwood Council has one planner per ninety-six applications. Gorky City Council has one planner per eighty-five applications. And Clarence City Council has one planner per a hundred and thirty-six applications. As indication, Mr Mayor, of resource savings, it is estimated that officer time preparing a term report under the delegation is less than thirty percent of the time involved in preparing a council report. That is, a seventy percent reduction in required time. So clearly, Mr Mayor, this time saving enables greater efficiencies. It enables greater efficiencies. It also reduces workload stress on planning staff. It has a directly related relationship to work quality and reducing the risk of error. And that is why, Mr Mayor, in the view of these factors, based on sound science, it is considered that it would be beneficial to extend the current delegation to allow determination applications with other two representations. Mr Mayor, if it is worthy of a representation, I would have thought we have more than two. So I rest my case on that and strongly urge colleagues to support the officer's recommendation for this sound policy approach.
Thank you. Alderman Berto, I think?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, just a small point in relation to natural justice. It needs to be kept in mind that any decision by the officer's under delegation allows for a right of appeal to the tribunal. So the aspect of natural justice is actually met in relation to that. So I think we need to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Sort of a muller?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We'll just go to this natural justice thing. If we're saying that you have your day in court by lodging an appeal, I think we are now getting to the point where, you know, we all know what the planning tribunal is like when it has its first mediation hearings and strongly discourages people from appealing where they don't have really good solid planning. Now, so I'd like to go to the point is that we are meeting as a planning authority because we are representatives of the people. Now, we know we've got some confined issues to deal with. We also know that we don't have much discretion when it comes to objectively stated performance criteria. But we do have a fair bit where the acceptable solutions aren't qualified and where this particularly where the performance criteria aren't qualified. Now, I'm happy, I would even be happy to go, it seems to be conveniently missing here, but I do recall at one stage we had a discussion where Bernie apparently does, it's all delegated and it's up to the general manager's discretion as to when he brings refusals or when he brings any matter. I would find, I'd be horrified at that because you're basically abrogating your responsibility as a planning authority, as elected representatives of a planning authority. Delegations, right? The one we've got now, and I haven't had a quick chance, but I perhaps should have had a look at to see how many issues we've had. Tonight's been a pretty long one compared to normal and it's having nine o'clock for heaven's sake. We've only been here two hours, you know? We as representatives of the community shouldn't be so fussed about spending time here doing our job. Quite often, it's the speeches that we make and the people hear those speeches that they go and have a look at and they say, well, maybe I won't appeal even though I don't like the decision because my elected representatives have walked through the issues with me and are now understand I might not have a leg to stand on and the process thereby is obviated instead of then looking at it and saying, we'll rush off to an appeal. Why is it that only refusals are automatically sent here and are dealt with under delegation? Why isn't it that, you know, the refusals? Well, you know, if you're going to go down this path, then anyway, there's only two representations and it's a refusal or less, then do it by delegation and let them head off to the planning commission. If it's two, why can't we have perhaps call-in powers for others? Maybe there is some issue about, you know, only two representations, one of the representatives or one representation and the representation actually has a matter that the officers, that relates to a non-specific performance criteria, which means that it's a subjective judgment that's being made under appeal. Maybe we should have a capacity to call those in. So there are lots of other issues that we're going to go around here if we're going to do our job. Now, quite often, the efficiency, you know, we're all about the efficiency of the process. Well, if the efficiency of the process, and I have a sneaking suspicion this is what the state government actually wanted, but it wasn't going to go that far, is that if you want to make an efficient process, then you get our council staff to assess the planning scheme, you send everything to the planning commission and make them do their job of enforcing the planning scheme that they keep imposing on everyone. So, you know, if you want to make it efficient, it will take us out of it altogether. But that's not what it's about. One of the objectives under LUPA, as we've discussed recently, is that there needs to be engagement of all three levels of government and there needs to be involvement in the community. And that's why I am concerned that we are heading down this path of, let's be efficient, let's not have a meeting at all. Let's just have a meet once every three weeks and have some motion, you know. some motion, you know, that may or may not have relevance to our city. And the rest of it, we'll just do by workshops and we'll turn up here and we're doing only mass motion for the whole night and then go home. You know, that's not what debates change is about, that's not what review processes are about, that's not what elected representatives are supposed to be doing. We're supposed to debate the issues. For heaven's sake, if a neighbour either side, and maybe that's another criteria, if there are two neighbours or a neighbour, you know, come, then either side, then we will take it on board because the people most affected are lodging complaints. So I'm really concerned that we're going down this path, two, three, four, no, send them all down there, you know, and leave the poor old people struggling in the planning commission without any guidance from their elected representatives about the merits or otherwise of their particular cast. No, Mr Mayor, entitled to their day in court.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Edmonds.
Thank you, thank you very much. Whenever we voted for this the first time around, I supported going from none to one. And Alderman James referred to a comment I made at a meeting probably half over twenty minute now, I think I read that vote. Still do. And to be honest, if I hadn't been interested in some of the evidence that we've put in our report, I wouldn't be happy with one that I want to go back to now. I think based on the evidence we've been given around the sheer number of refusals that would have had to be dealt with, I can with some degree of comfort support staying at one in terms of the way that I could defend that to members of the community. I don't feel the same way about going to two. In fact, I think, forgive me, I can't remember who made this point, but this started with a motion to go to one and then sunset clause that not to, not to come back with a report that says we should actually go north of where we were, which wasn't even discussed twelve months ago. I think we've got a responsibility to allow our residents to understand the system and understand sort of how the system works, I suppose. Alderman made some references to protections that DAs with a refusal get. He also made some points about people could come along and sort of have the system explained to them, you know, like they can see how this all works in action. Now, if I was aggrieved and objected to something, went through all the sort of processes that go with that and had, you know, another person who I'd never met before, but it was of the same mind, we both come see the gallery or watch on YouTube. Sorry, we don't even get a chance to do that. They don't get to see how things have done, all we do is get a letter that says there weren't enough of you to sort of map. I kind of, I'm not comfortable with that. I think when people come in, and we've all dealt with them, when people can have ideas about how this system works, they come in and see it work and they're actually satisfied, even though they were from their perspective. I really just think that there's actually something to be said in that. And, you know, there's a lot of local government conspiracy theorists out there, I think we're all familiar with that, you know, dealt with that. I actually find one of the best defenses to say that those people is actually, we do it in their eyes, we do it better than some of these other councils. I don't think Hobart City Council is a benchmark we should set ourselves on many, many fronts, and this is another one included on that. The debate about officers' time. Now, whilst I completely respect all the work that's gone into this and I can say I've read within my own mind, because I have changed my mind in this regards to going from zero to one, but it's not convincing enough for me to go to two. If we've got issues with the amount of resources we've got in probably the most essential core business area in terms of the day-to-day operations, at least that we deal with, then I think that's something that needs to be looked at in the budget process, not to be looked at about how do we target our hit. You know, we'd be more to that maybe in the staffing processes of the council, but goodness me, I'd be looking at ways to shift some money around and some resources to bulk these guys up if they're really under that much pressure. And last is a question, I sort of, you know, residents and community sort of gets conflated in this place, but when you think about the entire sort of constituency, are we here to do the bidding of the council administration or are we here to do the bidding of the constituency? You know, I mean, I support the workers of this organisation, I think you all know that and you've seen that in action behind the schools and perhaps not that much out here. But, you know, I think there's heaps of different things when we're talking about supporting staff and toeing the party one when it comes to the administration. I don't have a definition of what an alderman is, I know Alderman Mulder brought it up once when we tried to change the title, so I won't go too far down there. But, you know, our job is to represent the people who put us here, not necessarily the administration. And I guess that's the last point I made is that we're brought here by the residents, not by people who.
Thank you, Alderman Edmonds. Other speakers? Alderman Walker.
Thank you. So I think one point that's interesting to note tonight is no one circulated an alternative to take it back to where it was a year ago. So I think that tells us something that there have been merits and advantages to the change and these things are about to trade off to, you know, the benefits on one side and the downsides on the other. Just want to clarify how it's written. So if we go to 265, 2.4 says, in terms of comparative triggers to refer an application to council for approval, inquiries have showed that. And the second idea is Kingborough Council requires two representations. So I read that as that come the second representation, that triggers it coming before council. Is that the way it's intended to be written? Because that does seem to contradict.
Mr Lovell's nodding, yes?
So we go to the point 2.12, at the very end of 267, in view of these factors, it's considered it would now be beneficial to extend the current delegation to allow determination of applications with up to two representations. So if I read that as it stands, at the moment we're, if you take what's before that there, at the moment we're at Kingborough and we're going, we're ratcheting up to Hewon, is that the correct interpretation of how things are written before us?
That's correct.
So going from being the lowest threshold trigger to no longer being that and we will leave Kingborough then as the lowest threshold trigger?
Right.
This is, this is, this is a point that I just want to sort of work through. The change made a big difference. It made a big difference as far as, you know, not just efficiency, but a few other things. And Kingborough is managing as a high-growth council. I'd say that after Clarence, as far as sheer activity, bulk of activity, number, second place is Kingborough. I don't believe the surreal stories as far as sheer actual numbers go is Kingborough. And they seem to be managing at that level. And we'll see how it finishes up, but to stay at that threshold level where we're no longer lowest, but we're sitting here comparatively, is possibly a reasonable balance of democracy versus efficiency. It's an interesting one.
Thank you. Other speakers? Right reply, Alderman Piers.
Thank you, man. It's a couple of things I've just got to be great, you know, one is, with this objection, most times we will get an email anyway, an email or a letter or even a phone call. So we will know about it in people's ears. Two, Alderman Edmond said, you know, we should brief up our planning staff. That'd be great, but I'll look into the budget. Every time we talked about wages, someone was grilling wages all the time. Don't spend any more money on wages. Now, how many times did this come through? Third thing, yes, good Lord goodness, the stats on how many objections we actually get. And I can tell you now, sometimes you know we get objections from people. And when you look at the objections, they may have, say, two objections in their representation. But it's quite funny, sometimes all of them go off on a tangent on an objection, the object didn't even raise. And this has happened time after time in this council. If they stuck to the objections that the person raised, that would be fine, but quite often they go off on their own tangent. That's why I support this recommendation, man.
So the recommendation before us is as presented by the staff. All those in favour? Six against? One, two, three, four, five, must be six, six all, I think it is. Six all's lost. General Manager, where does that leave us in terms of the existing delegation of one? Is that ongoing or was that subject to a twilight clause?
Thanks, man. The provision that was referred to earlier, as I recall, was that we were sitting at one representation and it was to be reviewed in twelve months, not that it would sunset in twelve months.
Okay, so it remains one. All right, let's move on to Alderman's question time. There are no matters at 12.1 or 12.2, 12.3. Answer the questions without notice from a previous council meeting, we'll take those as read and move to questions without notice, mentioning with Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In regard to the Kangaroo Bay Hotel and Hospitality School development. One, has the building and plumbing permit been applied for yet or the application submitted to council? Two, have the developers secured contracts with either the hospitality school operator, a hotel operator or a construction company?
General Manager.
Thank you for the questions. You may have to remind me on a couple of those elements. The permits issue, as far as I'm aware, we have no application for permits at this time. Mr Sua?
Through you, Mr Mayor, we have issued a stage building permit that's for the work that's already been undertaken.
But there's no, no further permits for actual building construction?
No, we haven't issued any further permits apart from that initial stage on.
Thank you.
Have you received, have they been applied?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'll take that on notice and just check it to make absolutely certain.
The second part?
The other components were in relation to contracts that the developer would be required to enter into, ones with the hospitality school operator at UTAS.
I haven't got any formal notification of any of those arrangements at this time.
With the person to operate the hotel?
All of that with UTAS, with hotel operation and construction. I haven't had any formal notification of any of those matters.
The last time you said you were aware of tender negotiations undergoing, are you aware of any tender being issued or contract being obtained?
I'm aware that the construction tenders were out to market. I've had no advice as to who they've been beat to or if they've been beat at all. I know that they went to market though.
So then in relation to that, it's more or less my second question. So what are the prospects of this proposal actually meeting its substantial construction requirements by, I think it's in nine weeks' time?
Fourteenth of October is the critical date.
Fourteenth of October, so three weeks' time. Sorry, excuse me.
Yeah, I am able to advise Alderman that this afternoon, we confirmed a request from Shambrood and Hunter as the designers to present to council at a workshop on the 7th of September as an update.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Alderman Kennedy?
Excuse me, we've touched on, thank you, Mr Mayor, communication a little bit tonight and there was a matter that came before us in closed meeting recently. And there were a number of representations regarding this topic. Those representatives, a lot of time in effect, into those representations. So how do we intend to communicate the outcome with them, given that it was in closed meeting?
Thank you, Alderman Kennedy. We received your request this afternoon in regard to that matter and we'll prepare an Alderman's advice for you. But the short answer is that without a decision by council to release its reasons, then we're somewhat limited in terms of what we can say publicly. But we will prepare that advice and provide it to you and that advice will be in a form that you can discuss safely without breaching the local government act.
Alderman, you're okay?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, something that's come to the media a fair bit lately, paid media that is, in relation to the Hobart Airport Interchange. Now, I know when we approved the DA that came before us, you know, a couple of months ago, we were advised that negotiations were well underway with the owners of the land adjacent to the airport in Holliman Drive. And that day we were told that their negotiations were well advanced to provide them with access to their land to allow the developer to its full potential. Now, it appears that that has fallen over. So my question is, were we advised that that had fallen over and that there were problems the Department of State growth had withdrawn themselves from discussions with the consortium that owned the land?
Thank you, Alderman Ewington. I've had some discussions with the Department of State growth in respect to that matter. The advice I've received is at the point in time when an appeal was lodged by the owners of the relevant land, they are now focused on the appeal and are not of a mind to conduct negotiations on two fronts.
So we weren't advised before?
It wasn't for us, it wasn't, it wasn't for them, for either party to advise us.
Okay. And are we planning on doing anything to resolve the situation and ensure that the developers get an opportunity to develop the land to its highest potential?
The mayor and I have a meeting with the landowners tomorrow, I believe, tomorrow or Wednesday.
We're finding out what their side of the agreement is.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Edmonds.
Thank you. Question about Pipe Bay Estland. I heard that there was a grant given to the council to investigate some of the erosion issues there. Can I get any more detail as to whether there was a grant received and if it's reported or what the status of that is?
I'm not aware of that. I might ask Mr Graham to fill the.
Through, Mr Mayor, I don't believe there was any grant, but council did fund, from memory, last financial years, some funds to investigate, some societies to the embankment, which we've received a report from WRL and part of that may even be part of the discussion on the coastal policy when we get to a workshop this month.
So I guess my five is, as soon as practical and allowable, could I book that report?
Sorry, I couldn't.
Sorry, so if the reports exist and we're able to, then we are able to have a.
Yeah, through, Mr Mayor, yes, I can release that report with advice in relation to the coastal policy in terms of when doing that, because we'll issue a briefing report to Alderman in terms of all the issues related to that. And I can follow up also on that previous workshop in terms of we're looking at a polymer surface, whether that was applicable for Pipe Bay Estland as well.
Alderman Walker?
Yes, thank you. A survey was undertaken in recent times and I believe it's a process of sort of working through the results in relation to the South Arm Master Plan. Whilst no doubt a workshop will be forthcoming, would I be able to get some rough ballpark figure as to when any mitigation, if agreed upon by council, will likely be actually put in place because the issues are still ongoing, causing profound challenges for certain residents?
Mr Graham?
Through, Mr Mayor, the briefing report or memo was issued to council, I believe, last Friday, Jim? Yeah, so yes, we're preparing a workshop to council which will discuss the mitigation options, possible timing, but it is dependent upon where council wants to take the review of the master plan as well.
Okay, well, that's the answer I'll go. I'll through you again probably. Okay, well, that's the answer I've got. Um, I'll, uh, through you again properly to Mr. Graham, your worship. Uh, how many electrons have we dispersed, uh, through our electric vehicle charging? And if you want to round up to kilowatts or something else, that would be fine.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have to take that one on notice, um, in, in terms of how many vehicles and kilowatt hours we've done in terms of our charger. But I'll, I'll follow through with the advice to Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question regarding the, uh, legal action with Hobart International Airport. I got actually an email earlier this month from General Manager regarding the, um, August 6th, uh, full bench decision. I was wondering, um, how much to date, uh, this associated legal, uh, action has cost rate pays and clearance?
Uh, through you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the question. Um, I took the opportunity to, uh, to ask, um, our CFO earlier today what those costs were. Um, to date, we've paid in terms of court costs, twenty-seven thou, sorry, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, legal fees, hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, and that doesn't take into account any costs that we may get back through the successful appeal. So that's still in play. Put that in perspective, uh, currently on our calculations, um, which obviously is the central issue of dispute, we say that the, um, Hobart International Airport owes us outstanding rates in the order of four point one million dollars for the period from 1st of July 2014 to the, uh, 31st of August today, uh, today.
Thank you for that, Joe. I have a, a second question, Mr. Mayor, and that's regarding the Harrow Men Shed. Uh, I've visited there today and there's, uh, some issue with, uh, the men, the men shed using the shed whilst the Hara Bowls Club are playing outside. It's one regarding noise. I understand the council officers were there and, uh, the, um, uh, the council environmental health officer, workplace safety officer found that, um, that there wasn't, uh, a big issue there. But clearly these two neighbours working, uh, you know, their activities side by side. They mentioned they're very keen to see if there's any, um, support the council might be able to provide to, uh, deal with that noise issue.
Um, Mr. Tui, uh, Mayor may be able to add some more detail, but I, as I understand things, the, this isn't a compliance issue. The, the noise levels are compliant with relevant permits.
It's a good label in this.
Uh, that, that's right. Um, so in the context of any, uh, any work that we might, uh, consider, um, at this point in time, we're not aware that we've done any work in that regard or have a budget. But Mr. Tui may be able to provide some more advice.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in order to attenuate the sound issue to some extent, we really need qualified or expert advice from a sound engineer, uh, and in order to work out what would be a, a solution that may mitigate it. So it doesn't even become an annoyance. At the moment, it's not a nuisance and possibly it's an annoyance between those two. So at the moment, the budget doesn't provide for engagement of a sound engineer to do some preliminary, um, examination. But what we could do in, what we could afford and could do is initiate some further discussions between both organisations, the Bowls Club and the Men's Shed, to see if we can work over, work around getting some greater understanding and appreciation. So there's minimal effect on both sides.
Uh, thank you.
I, I wonder if the, uh, Men's Shed would be interested in a project to try and put some soundproofing into the shed?
I wonder if that might be explored?
That possibly might, uh, uh, Mayor. But, uh, first of all, we need that expert advice to make sure we weren't coming up with a solution that would work.
If I may, and I think, thank Mr. Tui. They've had a, an acoustic assessment quote and for the, for the work allowance, fourteen hundred dollars. And I suppose, uh, that's really where they're seeking support from council at the moment. So I'll leave it there with how they're going to.
Yes, I'll.
Now I could add some, I could add some clarity to this. So I can't hear.
Look, uh, Alderman Mulder said he can add some clarity because he happens to be on the committee for the Harrow Bowls Club. Not the Bowls Club, the Recreation Centre down there. I might, uh, invite him to, if he's got, got some clarity.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, the issue has been raised a couple of times and though, although they have an assessment, it has been done on a, um, program of basement whereby all they have is a, the, 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 the Men's Shed, they have a, a report which recommends installation of a, a sound, a, some sort of a bung or a, 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 a wall fence type arrangement. Um, and that that is, um, that was discussed at the committee last time and it was decided that, um, the fourteen hundred dollar quote for a wall that would attenuate noise, um, is probably, uh, not going to do, achieve very much at all, given the, uh, cost of, uh, our, our South Arm arrangements. So, um, if you think about the noise of a skateboard every now and then compared to a, uh, massive buzzing, and you are right at the meeting, at the meeting, the Men's Shed was suggested that, um, maybe we should have a look at getting a professional, someone to come in and have a look at, um, a, 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 a construction, um, engineer to come and have a look at how we would soundproof that, that, that shed. Because it is, the machines are located within sheds. Those sheds are just tin, uh, walls, um, which means that they actually act as probably drums and amplifiers rather than things. So your idea about inter- attenuation is not as serious as it seems. And that's where we stood with the Men's Shed at the last meeting. So, um, I think that discussion is actually in the minutes of the meeting, which I have yet to receive, so I haven't tabled. So I think there is some progress in that area, but, um, we do need to have a look at that. Um, and if there is to be attenuation, then we're going to have to have a look at, um, you know, some costs. But the proposal of the, um, engineers, I don't know whether it is that they could, for fourteen hundred dollars, they could build a sound wall. Um, I, I think that would, that would be, uh, not money well spent, I would think, in terms of that.
Thank you. Thank you for raising that, Alderman Tomlin.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. This is just for all the models, but I actually have a copy of the minutes here. So, um, so there has been, it has been a double as of applause, but I suppose back to my original question. Uh, will the officers be able to provide some, some answer to me so I can go back to the Men's Shed as to what support, if any, council might be able to follow?
Yes, most certainly we will.
Good, thank you.
Alderman Pierce?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I understand that there was a meeting of, uh, with council officers about the Rossning Bowls Club, the RSL and the Kopea Club. Would you be bored up to date with what's happening there?
Uh, news travels fast, I must say, Alderman, news. Lightning fast. Um, I will provide an update, um, at the next workshop if that suits.
Thank you. Second question, Mayor, and it may have been resolved, I have no idea, but we've got people here to tell me. The Harrow Rig Centre and the school parking issue, have we got any more on that?
Um, thank you, uh, for the question, um, through you, Mayor. Um, we've been corresponding with the Parents Association and the school. And, uh, I'm going to be fairly blunt. Uh, everyone's pointing fingers at everywhere other than themselves right now. Um, the issue that we have, uh, and we've tried to correspond with the school on a number of occasions and with the Parents Association is that this is an issue that primarily resides with the school. Uh, our concern, as we raised originally, was parents picking up and dropping off children within the Harrow, uh, Community Centre car park was inherently dangerous, particularly when those children are unsupervised as they depart from cars or come towards them. Uh, and that area is not designed for that purpose. And that the afternoon pickup has a high volume of activity from centre users. Um, we seem to be going around in circles in terms of, uh, creating a common understanding of the problem. Uh, I need to be very clear that our understanding is, uh, and our view is that the problem resides with the school and the way that their pickup is designed and operated. And we're encouraging them to look at, um, at that issue. And we've offered the assistance of council officers from a traffic management point of view in that regard.
Thank you.
Alderman James?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, um, question in relation to 19 Corinth Street in Harrow. Uh, my question through you to Mr. Lovell. Uh, Mr. Lovell, what is, uh, the current, uh, situation in relation to a minor amendment under section 56? And where it stands at the tribunal? And also is section 62 a consideration?
Mr. Lovell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, the, there's a briefing report on this matter. Uh, there's not much more I can add to it at this point. We're waiting on, on, um, on advice from the tribunal. So whether a, an application has been lodged or will be lodged with, with it to, uh, seek approval for certain changes to the building at 19 Corinth Street. Um, I happen to have spoken to the lawyer representing the developer last week and they indicated to me that we, that, uh, that they would be lodging something in the next, um, probably two weeks. Uh, we won't know which section, uh, uh, of the act, uh, an application will be lodged under because that's a matter for the applicant and will be notified by the tribunal as to what course of action they're taking.
Thank you. Um, second question, and it's probably, uh, appropriate to Mr. Lovell again and to answer my question. Uh, Mr. Lovell, is Mr. Morris Simmons Wolfhagen council's legal consultant slash advocate at most or if, at all, at all of the matters relation to mediation and the planning appeal process?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Morris's firm represents us these days on most applications. Uh, he's not necessarily our advocate. There are two or three other lawyers from his firm that occasionally represent council.
Just a supplement. It, it, does that mean that Simmons Wolfhagen does, whether it's Mr. Morris or any of the other legal representatives, do they handle or are councils legal, um, advocate on all matters pertaining to council's planning appeal process?
Uh, at the moment, they, they are doing all of the council work. So I think the General Manager might wish to add something to that.
Yes, thank you. Um, if I may, through you, Mayor. Um, Simmons Wolfhagen have been engaged at some time as our, uh, principal legal representative in planning matters, unless they have a conflict, in which case we look elsewhere. And on some occasions, we may require specialist advice, um, from a different firm. So we're not, uh, not solely using Simmons Wolfhagen, but for the majority of the time, that would be the case.
Thank you.
Alderman Walker? Uh, that bridges the close of the public meeting. So, uh, can I thank the members of the public and, uh, and everyone for the meeting so far, which I now close.